Ready?
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Good afternoon, this is the caucus meeting for August 13, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience the notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall, 260 High Street, at 5:30 PM. Right now it's 5:35 PM. The council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
She had a family emergency.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Okay, we have a presentation. Ken Wallens from MPS Solar Stick, innovative safety technology.
Can everyone hear me okay? Is this microphone on?
You'll have to really get close to it, otherwise you'll lose.
I think we need to get better microphones.
How's this?
Okay.
Okay, great. Now I'll try to project my voice anyway. First, I just want to thank everyone. I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk about this technology that we have. This is a smart city technology solution. I'm going to talk a little bit about how it works. If I'm doing my job, this is going to be more of a discussion. I want to answer any questions that you might have. And I'm going to try to be brief. Essentially, what we're looking to do is help municipalities improve public safety. That's really what this technology is about. There are other use cases where we've been able to adapt the technology that we're pretty excited about, such as the enforcement of double parking. That's very new, and I'll get to that in a moment. I'm not sure if you can see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. As I said, this is really about public safety. And one of the things that we're really proud of is that larger cities now, like in the Boston area, Somerville, Jersey City, those are cities now that are part of the Vision Zero Initiative, and they're approaching us because of our technology. Even smaller cities can identify with smart or safe street solutions. And that's what we're looking to help our municipal partners achieve. And one thing in particular that I'm really proud of is that we have a unique model that I can talk about a little bit further. It's a license fee model. We cover all the upfront costs. Our only source of revenue is a fee for each captured violation. I can talk about that as well. And here's, just kind of jumping right into it, these are the types of problems that cities are constantly encountering. And one of the drivers for this, we find, is that there's a very strong correlation or leading indicator with population density. And that's certainly the case here in Perth Amboy. I call this Starbucks syndrome. It's a crime of convenience. It's also, I think, in a lot of cases, people willing to try their luck because with historical leniency, for example, people are more apt to park. Also, where there's scarcity of available parking, people are more apt to make poor decisions. And that's the type of behavior that we're looking to curtail. In some of the cities where we put the technology, they're finding that if they step up the enforcement of this hazardous, dangerous parking, they can be a little bit more lenient on the on-street parking, like a meter. You know, we can all sympathize if someone gets a ticket for overtime parking on the street. This is something that should never be tolerated because it's a safety hazard. We're talking about blocking crosswalks, intersections, hydrants, locations like that. So there's a few drivers for this. I'm just going to be very brief. One is, you know, I was talking about the safety aspect of it, Vision Zero initiatives. A lot of cities are trying to have more dynamic capabilities on their street so we can enforce by different dayparts. For example, we could have loading zones that effectively have permitting access for certain people, certain business owners, that sort of thing. We can repress licenses. We're looking into ways to enforce handicap parking, for example, and by granting those rights based on license plate. So, and that's something that's been really, we can really start to be kind of creative with it. The other idea is it's unbiased enforcement. We don't know anything about the driver. We just know that this vehicle with this plate number parked here at this time, they surpassed the 92nd grace period. We have photographic evidence, and therefore, a violation is going to be mailed to them. I talked a little bit about our business model. We can do this because it's proven. We've been doing this for about a dozen years with other types of driving solutions or parking solutions, I should say. And what we're finding typically, and obviously, every city's setting is different. I talked about historical leniency, population density, availability of alternate parking. Those all come into play. But typically, what we see is there's really kind of three baselines of data. There's the data today, which is there's a lot of violations that you're not capturing, so you don't know what the true number is. Then there's day one when you go live. You start capturing data. And over time, that data is going to allow you to inform decisions. You're going to see trending data. Hopefully, you're going to see that the deterrent effect is kicking in, and people are thinking twice when they see the devices, and they're going to park elsewhere. And so over time, that's going to allow you to make informed decisions on whether you want to scale up, whether you want to add more. Or maybe in some cases, it turns out you didn't need the device to be placed there in the first place. Over time, what we see is it's really interesting because that baseline, the new baseline, is still going to be about four or five times higher just by virtue of the fact that you're no longer relying on patrol or directed enforcement, which is only effective probably about 5% to 7% of the time. So in the interest of time, I'm just going to kind of skip ahead. If there's any questions, please jump in. These are the typical use cases that we handle. So we're talking about, you know, mostly illegal parking, bus stops, bike lanes. We are doing more for, we have cities that are looking for increasingly allocating spaces for ride share, and that would work very similarly to a loading zone where you have a specific time limit. We also have a grace period with illegal parking. It's typically 90 seconds. We can be more generous with a grace period for parking that's not a hazard. So typically, that's like a five-minute grace period. Lyndon, New Jersey, was our first municipality to deploy these devices for time-wounded parking, which you'll find often in front of banks or post offices. So 15 minutes, 30 minutes. The idea being maybe not to generate revenue for these parking spaces, but having turnover as a priority, making fairness and equity available parking. We have a unique, patent-protected solution and the benefit of this, and I can share examples of sole-source resolutions that municipalities have passed. And this is some examples of the device out in the wild. You know, New York City, they're only capturing about 2% of the bike lane violations, and technology is something that they're looking into. When we went live in Boston, the Globe covers it. We got some great coverage with the media. I bring that up because we like to say that we're really part of the community, and we want to be able to adapt to the unique needs of each community. When the reporters are going out in the street and they're interviewing the community, people who are citizens there, they're invariably supportive of it. They also walked up to people who were legally parked, and, you know, them not so much. But the idea is that this is modifying their behavior, and so that's really important. Some more examples. This is Gottenburg, New Jersey, which is the most densely populated municipality in the country. And this picture on the right almost looks like it could be staged. This is a double violation. Well, you can see the public safety interests that we're looking to protect here. You can imagine if there was a vehicle parked in that yellow box area, what a hazard it would be if a vehicle was trying to pass through. And now I'm going to very quickly talk about how, and we've had some good success with the airports. I'm going to talk about how we make this solution available to police officers. They're serving as the witnesses. Our business model is predicated on that. We want them to have the latitude and the discretion to decide whether it's a violation, just as they normally do today. I want to emphasize before that. We cover all the upfront costs. There's no surprises. Our only source of revenue is the license fee. So we'll come on site. We'll do the installation. It goes in with a few anchor bolts. We cover maintenance and repair as needed. And so there's four key steps to how the platform operates. The first one is we capture the violation in progress. That goes up into the cloud. We host it on AWS, which is widely regarded as the most reliable system for uptime and security. And then the second step is we have our own customer service reps review the violations. The idea being that we only want to host this evidence for the officers to review that we feel are legitimate violations. Generally speaking, we expect that they're going to approve about 95% of the violations that we host. But again, it's the officers that have the latitude and the discretion to make the final call on whether it's a violation. And so that's the third step. Each officer is going to get a unique login that corresponds with their badge number or some other identifier. And they're going to serve as witnesses, just as they normally do. But instead of having to rely on being on-site, they're going to look at the photographic evidence. And that's step four. For all approved violations, this fourth step is what we call our evidence form. And that's going to have all the essential details of the violation, the time, the location, the description, the violation amount. And that's going to be paired up with the city's own violation, whether it's what the e-ticket is. Do you use Infocop or, I'm not sure what you might use, but... Do you stand up? Okay. So what's interesting is in the state of New Jersey, in all other states where we operate, we can provide printing and mailing services, including lookup for the violations as part of a value-add service that we provide. We're looking to become registered to do that in New York. We were providing it for a while, and the administrative office of the court said that's something that we'd have to be essentially filed to become an e-ticket provider. So we're looking at that process. The good news is that the state has already vetted the system and has approved it. They set a requirement is that it has to be officers that review the evidence, which is something that's important to us anyway. And then secondly, that the mailing has to originate from the municipality. And so that's how it works. The standard violation is sent by mail, and it's sent out to the offenders. And one of the things that is really beneficial to officers, kind of a hidden benefit really, because it's sometimes hard to measure, is this is really about resource allocation. You know, at any given moment, a police officer has more important things to do than put a violation on a windshield. Not to say that that's not important, but if they're pulled away, if someone doesn't show up as a crossguard in the morning, that's something that they have to do right now. And this is something they can do asynchronously. They can find time to do it at their leisure. So they can make it a priority, but it also can fit within their schedule. One of the things that departments like is that they now can ignore locations that have the safety sticks. Now, if an officer comes across a violation, wants to act on it, and put a handwritten violation on the windshield, they're free to do that. We just ask that they then log into the system and void from our system so that the offender doesn't get a duplicate violation. And that's really it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. That's something that we...
Get close to.
I'm sorry. That we've been discussing because parking is an issue in the city. So in certain areas, we were looking to create like zones, where it's like when you're, allow people to park for like 10 minutes without, right, without them being issued a ticket. Then I would say, I think, once it hits 12 minutes, then that's when it would trigger the officer to, all right, they're going to be issued a ticket because you want to give, because sometimes people do, because parking, there's a premium in the city.
I can see that.
People will need to, sometimes they just need to run into someplace for 10 minutes. There'll be designated areas, but I just want to make sure that that is the discretion that officers do have.
That's an ideal use case.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I do. Yeah, sorry. Have there been any vandalism issues that were reported regarding...
That's a question I'm constantly asked when I bring up our business model. And we've been really fortunate that it has not been a concern. There have been isolated incidents. I can think of one incident where a device was spray painted over. That's one in a large city of over 200,000 residents. So our policy on that is just as we do with maintenance and repair, we will replace it. And then because this is a partnership, if we see repeated problem, what we might ask is, you know, let's hold off on replacing that device there in that location for a couple of months until we can figure out what the problem is.
Okay. Have there been any other, like, any common issues or complaints, like, you know, often, that have been reported either by the municipality or residents?
Sometimes residents are resistant, and I believe that's because they conflate the idea of getting a ticket for legal parking, like an overtime meter, versus illegal parking, which is unsafe. And so sometimes there's a little bit of an education process. One of the things I learned along the way that was really shocking to me is that a big reason people park in illegal spaces is to avoid paying a meter. And that was lost on me for four years until it was explained to me by one of the municipalities. So overall, I would say, you know, with a few exceptions, of course, we have a lot of support by the community. If you Google us, you'll see we've gotten some increased media coverage. Last week, it was a New York City network affiliate, the ABC affiliate, went on-site and interviewed some police departments. And so the police are really supportive of it. We're grateful for that. All of our New Jersey municipal partners are in full force, and about half of them have added more sticks and phases. So that's a great vote of confidence. In fact, a lot of the time, when municipalities are vetting this out, they'll call other police departments. And I'm happy to give out names of that. What I don't do is a courtesy to our municipal partners, I don't even give them a heads up to expect the call because I want them to really share their authentic experience of how this works. You know, this is technology, and it takes time to adapt for the operators, for the community, and all that. We are rolling out social media tools to help with that, to kind of educate and communicate. We have some municipalities, Dover, for example, is about to go live with us. And at their own cost, Woodbridge did the same thing. At their own cost, they're going to go through a one-month period where instead of issuing payable violations, they're going to be sending out warnings. And our skin in the game is that we're not going to charge them for those violations during that period. I think that's overly generous because illegal parking, again, is a different animal. People should know, if they have their driver's license, that you shouldn't be parking a crosswalk. Anytime, if you have your driver's license, you know, you shouldn't park in a bus stop. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to create awareness among the community. But I do think it can be a little bit generous to mail them a ticket at your expense and say, next time you're going to get a ticket. But that's something that we're certainly supportive if you choose to do it.
Thank you. Sorry.
Are you done?
I do have one more question. Speaking of mailing of tickets, what are the issues or problems, if any, that you've known, that you know of? Like, when you mail the ticket, sometimes the vehicle operator is not the owner of the car. So obviously, the owner of the car is the one that's going to get the ticket.
Correct.
So what if it's not the owner of the car that was there, and then the owner's going to complain?
So, yeah...
I wasn't the one driving the car.
It's an interesting question. The same applies today if someone gets a ticket, a parking ticket in the street anyway. So it's the same animal. That really hasn't come up as a concern. I think it's because it's just an accepted practice.
Okay. Thank you.
I know you mentioned something about double parking. Is there some municipality that you can refer, that you can mention that is usually doing the double parking part of it?
So this is a new technology that we're just rolling out. We are looking to roll it out kind of as a pilot phase with Wilkes-Barre. And Patterson has expressed interest. Anyone who's been there can understand why. And we'd be happy to talk about that with you as well. We don't know what to anticipate because this is a new adaptation of existing technology. And this is through a partnership that we're really excited about. That really complements our technology. It's with Flock. And Chief, you might be familiar with Flock. Flock is a law enforcement technology company that's known for their cameras. They have solar-powered cameras that we don't have as part of our portfolio of technology. And so we think that this partnership is really complimentary. There are a lot of grants available to police departments from Flock. And in the same way that we offer our unique business model, we'll also support that with Flock cameras. So this is something new. It's just kind of an extension of what our capabilities are today.
Thank you. Thank you. I think this is a question more for the administration and the chief. I know this presentation is coming over because you're kind of thinking about it. Is there a particular area that you're planning, if this goes through, to implement this at the beginning?
Yes, we want to start this pilot program in the business district, just solely in the business district, to see how it works before expanding. But that's what we want to try it at, in the business district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex approving certain amendment to the Focus 2020 Redevelopment Plan Area Two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicap persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about addition and deletions. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Records. Ordinance number 621-93, adopted August 4, 1992, also known as Chapter 425 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. Number four...
Madam President?
Yes?
I have a question. So we're amending the records.
Get over here.
Oh, sorry. We're amending the ordinance. Exactly what are we amending?
That was the...
I believe that's the one that, for them to open, to stay open on Sundays, right?
On Sunday for whoever is on duty.
Right, but we agreed that it was going to be...
We amended it, right?
Right.
Is it amended?
It's, if you vote for tonight, the one change in language is Section 12, and it requires tow companies that are on call for police towing on Sundays or holidays shall be available to vehicle owners from noon to 5:00 PM for vehicle owners to pick up their vehicles to save neighbors to tow. We changed the language. If you'll recall at the last meeting, we had some different, some different timing requirements in there. We changed it at the council's request to do it in 5:00.
Right, right. Okay. I'm good.
I'm nothing, sorry. My iPad is acting up.
Okay. Number four, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Storm Water Management. Ordinance number 1970-2021, adopted April 28, 2021, also known as Chapter 384 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about storm water control for non-major developments. Number five, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Council Rules of Procedure. Ordinance number 5-72 is amended, adopted September 19, 1972, also known as Chapter 8-436 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about addressing the council. Number six, ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 Redevelopment Plan Area Three, Northern Industrial pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Number seven, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend and supplement Chapter 335, property maintenance of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy to include additional regulation related to the relocation assistance for tenants displaced due to illegal occupancy. This is about eligibility, amount, and landlord liability. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Minutes, council meetings minutes for June 10 and 26, 2024, July 10, 2024, August 14, 2024.
Council President, I just want to have a question. When are we going to get caught up with the minutes? Because I'm not comfortable with...
Okay. There were more on the agenda, but on the agenda prep, we decided that we'll do only this block of minutes. So we will have the time to kind of review it. And then the other ones that are already ready will be on the next agenda.
Okay.
So they're almost caught up.
Yeah, we're going to spread them out. Oh, I'm done for the year, but you'll get them each meeting. Because I remember you said one time that, don't give you so many of them because you don't have time to review.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just like, one year and people were approving minutes, and I'm like, I don't remember what happened yesterday. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, bids. Bids were received on August 5, 2025 for the following. Number one, 2025 Road Improvement Program Phase Four, Barry Avenue, Clark Avenue, and M Street. The bidder, Z Brothers Concrete Contractor, Inc., base bid, $724,846.10, additional alt A, $36,460.79, additional alt B, $37,905.40, for the total of $799,212.29. The next one was S Brother, Inc., Black Rock. This is a little hard to read. Enterprise LLC. No.
No.
It's S Brother, Inc. That's one. The additional alt A is $43,999.71. Additional alt B, $42,926.72, for a total of $816,995.62. Then we have Black Rock Enterprise LLC. The base bid was $821,000.375. Additional alt A, $42,433.40. Additional alt B, $51,805.50, for the total of $915,242.65. The next one is DLS Contracting, Inc. The base bid is $897,000.748. The additional alt A is $30,538. Additional alt B, $58,375. And the total bid will be for $986,661. C Coast Construction, Inc. The base bid was $1,221,225.94. The add alt A is $101,465.86. Add alt B, $84,660.32, for a total of $1,407,352.12. The recommended... Which one is the recommended one?
It was a star. The Z Brothers.
The Z Brothers? It doesn't show it there. Okay. Reports. Number one, GLA Goldie CFO Controller submitted the following. Number, Investment Report for the month of June 2025. B, Revenue and Appropriations Status Report as of June 2025. Current fund, water, waste, water utility, parking utility, harborside marina utility. C, Check Register Report for June 2025, in the total amount of $10,807,50.96. Number two, Fallon Barcheski Tax Number two, Fallon Barje- Barchesky Tax Collector submitted the report of collections for the month of June twenty twenty-five. Ordinance first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second nineteen eighty-five. Also known as chapter two fifty-five seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletions. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, county of Middlesex, New Jersey and amend an ordinance entitled streets and sidewalks, ordinance number one twenty-one dash seventy-six. Adopted December twelfth nineteen seventy-six as amended by ordinance number five thirty-seven dash ninety-one, adopted April sixteen nineteen ninety-one. Also known as chapter three eighty-six seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this is about sidewalk construction and repairs, inspection fees. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled vehicles and traffic. Ordinance number one ninety-four dash seventy-eight as amended, adopted September nineteen nineteen seventy-eight. Also known as chapter four fourteen seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this is related to no turn on Red on Smith and Goodwin intersection. Number four, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled property maintenance, ordinance number six forty-six dash ninety-two as amended. Adopted November sixteen nineteen ninety-two, also known as chapter three thirty-five seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. Resolution, R three fourteen eight twenty-five authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to N J S A forty, forty A column four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine. P L nineteen forty-eight for the second street pump station with the renovation grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. R three fifteen eight twenty-five authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to N J S A forty A column four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine P L nineteen forty-eight for the assistive technology grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. R three sixteen eight twenty-five authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to N J S A forty A column four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine P L nineteen forty-eight for the assisted transportation grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. R three seventeen eight twenty-five authorizing the insertion of revenue in the calendar year twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to N J S A forty A, the column four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, P L nineteen forty-eight for, for the residential maintenance grant in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. R three eighteen eight twenty-five approving the calendar year twenty twenty-four annual audit corrective action plan and authorizing the filing of said plan with the division of local government services. R three nineteen eight twenty-five authorizing a refund for a twenty twenty-five peddler's application in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars to Leonel Tejera. R three twenty eight twenty-five authorizing a refund of the, in the amount of two hundred dollars to, to Quilvio Jerez for overpayment of a twenty twenty-five taxi cab owner's license. R three twenty-one eight twenty-five authorizing the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six renewal of a certain plenary retail consumption pocket license number twelve sixteen dash thirty-three dash zero seventy dash zero zero five for V N R Investment LLC. R three twenty-two eight twenty-five certifying to the local finance board of the state of New Jersey that all members of the governing body have reviewed the section of the annual audit entitled general comments and recommendation govern- governing body certification and the annual audit ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. R three twenty-three eight twenty-five authorizing accumulated leave payout for police sergeant Louis Perez in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred and one dollars with seventeen cents. Based on his retirement on August first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam President.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, and this is also in regards to three twenty-four eight twenty-five, Mr. Quiller. Now, it says that the sergeant's gonna get forty-two thousand five hundred and one dollars and seventeen cents. And Mr. Quiller's gonna get eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Now, if I'm reading this agenda, what is he getting it for? That's my first question. My second question is, why now? Uh, I've been employed for the city for forty years. I have never up until this point ever seen this in the agenda. So why now? Can somebody explain to me why we're putting this in the agenda? Now, from what I understand, what I understand, uh, there's no legal basis for putting this in the agenda. And then under contract, under the firefighter's contract and the P B A contract and the F O P contract, contractually, they, they would get paid out whatever they're owed. So if, if we're gonna put this here, shouldn't we also be putting what the backup is to that? Is it their comp time? Is it their vacation time? Is it their unused sick time? So it's actually two questions here. Why isn't it all that? And number two, why is it here after all, all these years? It's never been there before. Now it is.
Who can answer that?
And I, I'm acting on behalf, I've been approached by the leadership of the P B A and the F O P to ask that question. So it isn't like I'm just talking about, I've been asked to bring this up.
So, Lucy, two questions, so I'll. The second, I'll, I'll, I'll answer the, the second first. So in terms of the backup, if you need the information, in terms of, uh, what they're being paid out for, that can be, uh, provided to you, but it's a combination of all of his vacation, uh, comp time, whatever they, they, they've accumulated uh, over the years in their retirement that they're, they're old and entitled to as per, uh, the C B A. Uh, that's what they're going to get when they leave, just like any other municipal employee. Uh, they will be provided that, uh, once they leave, um, without mentioning any names or anything, but no, their, their names are on it, but we don't have to mention them. And the fir- what was the first one again? That was the first part, the first question.
Right, right.
So the first question was, you asking why now?
Why now?
Um, so for me, how I, I would, uh, address that to you is, I just looked at it on my, in my experience, I've never had anyone like how you're addressing it and, and asking about why are these people being paid out? Uh, it's just a, everybody, once they get, once they retire, are going to be paid out the same way. I'm used to it going be before the council, so that you have an idea, yes, everything is in the C B A and has been approved. But it's not itemized and broken out for you, so it's just really a courtesy to the council. So you know exactly why, uh, these people are being paid out, what they're owed. Um, and it's, I've, I've never heard it being questioned, it's really just a matter of, so you know who's being paid, what they're being paid for, the amounts, and when they're being paid. So it's, that's really all it is.
I, I, I understand.
Like every other municipal employee.
But what I'm saying is, if we could go back to, we could just pick a year, we can go back ten years, twenty years here in the city of Perth Amboy. I, I'll use me as an example. When I retired in September of twenty thirteen, I received a payout just like, um, Sergeant Perez did. And my name wasn't on the agenda on me being paid out. When people have left here and even, we'll get, a, a good example is the former chief of police, the chief of police that retired a couple of years ago. He had a payout, I mean, pe- you know, the chief of police, the head of public works, uh, laborer at public works. I know it pertains to all city employees because we had a regular city employee on the last agenda last month. My point is, up until this time, it's never been done here. Is what I'm saying, that's my point. So that question was why now?
So.
I mean, look, to me, I'm just responding to what I was asked to find out why. Why now? And that pertains not only to the firefighters and police officers, that applies to every employee of the city of Perth Amboy that would be entitled to any type, type of payout when they leave.
So.
And, and, and if I'm sitting in the audience and I'm looking at the agenda, right? And I say, well, these guys are getting this money, what's that money for? Now, it doesn't say that, it doesn't spell it out.
Council, it's not on the bu- title on the resolution of the agenda, but there is backup.
Correct.
It says exactly where and from what, whether it's vacation, sick time.
Okay.
It is, it is supported.
But I'm just saying what it doesn't say here.
So.
No, it's not on the agenda, no.
So just for clarity, councilman, that, that like, you know, as you know, when we provide you all with your, um, your, your, the agenda along with your, your packet that has all of the backup, the backup is not what, you know, the, the, the general public is not going to always have access to all of that backup, but we're gonna make sure that you have it so that you're aware of what's on there. Now, I just want to answer your question now in regards to.
I understand that, I'm just saying what the public would ask. I know what that's for. You know, I know it's sick time, comp time, and unused vacation time, I know all of that. And I'm sure my council may know that. And again, I'll go back to my first question, why now?
I think his main question, if I may, is, uh, is it a requirement to do that? Is that your question?
That's my question.
Maybe Mr. Opal can. Is that a requirement? Um, and maybe in the past, we never did.
I think I, I understand what you're asking is that this is a contractual obligation, so why is it subject to council?
Right.
I think the reason is because it's an expenditure and because the CFO has been asked to certify funds to make sure that the city has the money in these accounts to pay these funds. And I've, I, I, I can't with certainty say whether or not I've seen this before here in Perth Amboy. I take it at your word that we haven't done it before, but I have seen in other municipalities that when there is these type of payouts that we need to be able to certify that we have the money available and the council's authorizing that payment.
Okay. All right.
It's for, more for transparency, I, I will say.
I, I would agree with that as well, yes.
Well, as far as transparency goes, I mean, can we list it on the agenda without having to specify a specific name? Or is that required? I mean, we just really need to approve the total amount.
You can, if, if that's, if, if you want that on there, we can add additional information, I'm just, I just didn't, it's, in my experience, it's never been really necessary to add additional information on there. It's really, you see it, you'll see the backup, this is what it's for, and it gets approved. Like I've never experienced discussion on it because everybody knows they're entitled to it. It's really, again, it's just a courtesy to make you aware of it and to just so you know that, that there's funding to pay them. That's it.
Are you okay?
Um, I'm just gathering my thought a minute. All right, I get it, I understand, I got Mr. Opal's response, I got the B A's response. My question's still not answered. Why now? That's, you know, I asked, why are we doing it now when we've never done it before? That's all I'm asking. Why are we doing it now? And I mean, I could ask the comptroller, well, have you ever done this before? And I'm sure the answer is gonna be no. So, and, and all I'm trying to say is why are we doing it now? To me, moving forward, if it's on the agenda next month, I'm still gonna vote on it, I'm still gonna say yes, because these people are entitled to the money. But in order to be transparent, I'm asking the question, why is it on there now? Why are we doing it now? When we never did it before? And I mean, if it's, if it's done statutorily, you need to do it, I get it then, I understand, then we were wrong for never doing it before. So, you know, look, I answer to the people that put me here. And they're asking me to find out why now. And I'm asking, why now?
I can't point to the specific statute off the top of my head, but I would say that I, I, I think this is the best practice as to how to handle this.
I believe in transparency, but transparency should be across the board all the time, not just this. Everything that we do should be transparent. And look, I could start for the next ten minutes and talk about things that I know that don't appear on the agenda. So all I'm saying is, if you're saying we need to do it, I believe you. But at the end of the day, I'll just leave it at that, I don't think my question has really been answered. I think we played ring around the rosy a little bit, but we didn't answer the question.
So I, I, I want to be brief, I don't want to take too much more time and belabor this point. So what I would say is, I can't speak to what transpired before me, uh, or before I got here. But as I'm here today, makes my seventy-fifth day on the job, but as things are brought to my attention or I discover them, I address them. Um, and I try to do things in a fair and transparent manner. If I see that something needs to be corrected because we probably, maybe we just overlooked it, it was nothing done out of malice, then it's going to be addressed, but I do believe that this is a best practice. Um, everywhere that I have been, that is how it has been, has, has been done, just so that there's transparency to the council. There's, there, that we know that we actually have funding to pay them, not that we don't, but you have to certify funds for everything that's paid out. Um, it's the same for every, it's the same for every, every municipal employee. So again, I, I can't speak to why we weren't doing it in the past. I just looked at it, you know, this is a good, a, it is a definitely a best practice. And it was really just a, it, to make sure that you all know exactly what's being paid out. Because again, you know, there's things that get paid out that you may see, but not really know what it's for until you actually dig into the, the backup and know, and see, all right, this is what this is for, you ask a specific question and myself or Ms. Goldie can answer it for you. But that's really, it's just a best practice, it was not about, again, I can't speak to why it wasn't going on before. There's, I don't want, I'm not gonna bring anything else up, but there's other things that I have discovered that once I figured it out or I, I saw it, I brought it to the team, I said, we need to correct this and do it the right way.
Um, I'm all for transparency and, and doing what's, you know, for best practice. Um, I guess my question now is, not towards you, but the ones, the, the individuals that have approached you about it, what is their concern about listing it on, on the agenda and being transparent? Is there any specific reasoning as to why they're questioning why it's being done now?
Yes, I mean, basically, it's the same thing, why now? It's contractual, uh, and all the city's employees are contracted, everybody's under a contract. And that is contractual, you know, uh, why are we doing it now? And, and my response, I mean, their response to me was, nobody told them why. Why now? So that's why I, I hammered on why now. So, and look, granted, you know, what happened in the past, happened in the past, and I get it. And as far as the backup is concerned, yes, I understand, I know, I know what you get paid, what the payout is. All I'm saying is, and again, I'll go point to the people here. If they read that, they're questioning, they're questioning, not my question as a councilman, they're questioning, the citizens questioning. What are they getting paid for? What is that they're getting paid for? So of course, now, I don't think any of us up here can go into great detail, why do we? Why Louis Perez, why Charlie Quiller, or what that money is, is getting. That's, that's a personnel issue. So, yeah, it's in the backup. And I get that. And all I'm trying to tell you is, whatever this issue is, as far as the, the unions are concerned, that's between the administration and those unions. I'm just responding to an inquiry that was made to me. And, and doing my due diligence as a councilperson to find out, to get behind why now. I think I got a reasonable explanation from the BA. I'm not trying to say, you know, I thought that was very reasonable. So, anything else needs to be hammered out between the unions and the administration. So, I, I get it. I'm, I understand. I don't have a problem, and this is the bottom line, to tell you that I'm not just pro them. I don't have a problem with it being on the agenda. That's my position. So, I would never have a problem with that. I believe that transparency. So, I think we answered the question.
Thank you. And I just think, I'll just say to this, uh, this discussion, or you bringing it to the, the forefront, or bringing it up, uh, will give everyone clarity on when they do see them on there, what they're being paid out for.
Right. I agree with.
Oh, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
I am agreeing with the, the transparency, but like he said before, it has to be all around, from every single
person.
employee in the city.
Understood.
Because that's just, would be fair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. R three twenty-four, eight twenty-five, authorizing accumulated leave payout for Charles Quilla in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars with eighty-two cents, based on the retirement on August first, twenty twenty-five. R three twenty-five, eight twenty-five, accepting the bid and awarding a contract for the cleaning and linen of a section of the West Interceptor Sewer Main Project to Sp- Espinello Companies in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and seven dollars. Wait a minute, uh, do we have the bid for that one?
I think that was before.
Is that the one?
Where you got that?
No.
I thought we, uh, the agenda prep, we kind of spoke about it, and you say you didn't have it. You never got it? You never got that one?
And is, uh, Mr. Jimenez here? I do have a question beforehand.
Jimenez?
No, he's not here.
He's, no. Mr. Jimenez is, is, he's out on sick leave right now.
Oh, he is, okay.
There is a memo in the backup.
If you have a question, I'll take it to him. I work with him.
Okay.
You have a question?
I, I actually, I, I'll, I have some comments and questions regarding some complaints I had received from, um, some individuals, uh, regarding the, the, uh.
You wanna come up?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, it was brought up to me, uh, you know, some complaints regarding sewage on the beach area, right down by the Brighton area. There was problems with sewage, um, appearing on the beach area. And also sewage by the Marina. Um, there was complaints that during the last big storm that we had, there was this really bad sewer backup. Which was feces all over, wipeys, dirty diapers, and it, it really smelled. And it ended up going into the, you know, into the water. Um, I thought that we had replaced that pump that was there.
We did, but there's, uh, issues with the pumps, and also there, with the elevation. And those last two storms were such high volume, and they occurred at high tide. So there was no place for the water to go at that point.
So the, I mean, regardless, the pump would have never helped.
It wouldn't have been able to work because of the, due to the volume of the water and the occurrence of high tide at the time.
There's no way of remediating that problem for it to happen again?
We're looking into it.
Yeah, because it was, um.
And I think this is not the first time that it happened, right?
Right, so if there's a way from Mr. Jimenez to give me an answer as how, what are the possibilities of remediating that from it happening?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then overall, just like a plan in place for proactive measures?
R three twenty-six, eight twenty-five, authorizing the proper city officials to submit an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for the Port Security Grant Program, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, to be used for training and equipment. R three twenty-seven, eight twenty-five, authorizing refund of an adoption fee in the amount of a hundred and sixty dollars to Brenda Lopez. R three twenty-eight, authorizing a contract with Veramas Ford, Inc. for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Ford Transit three hun- three fifty MR XL RWD with option through Bergen County Coupe, B C dash bid, twenty-four dash forty-three coupe, number C K zero four, in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars with forty cents.
Uh, I have a, a couple of questions I wanna ask the chief. I, I also have, I also have photographs if I, that, that he's got on the computer. But I, I, I don't need them, John Luke. I don't, I don't need them. No. I just have a couple of questions, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, this vehicle is going to replace one of the traffic maintenance vehicles?
I believe the one we're speaking of is the bus that is gonna replace the bus that was twenty years old that is no longer repairable.
Oh, we're gonna do the bus first?
I believe that's what's on first, yes.
Well, let's do, all right, yeah, the bus.
Yes.
Uh, here's my question about the bus. I mean, it's gonna be transporting people, so I guess the person that really drives the bus would have to have a C D L.
It falls.
With an endorsement.
It falls below the class requirement, class C, because of the amount of passengers that it does have. It is not air brakes or anything like that.
All right.
How many, sorry, how many passenger?
I wanna say, I'd have to, ten, I believe it is, ten passenger.
All right, that, that's that one. Now, let's go on to three twenty-nine. That's really where all my questions are.
Okay.
All right, that's gonna replace one of the traffic maintenance vehicles.
Correct.
I mean, I, I did go on Monday, Madam President, took several, I think actually there was twenty photographs. Yeah, they're shot. So, how this works with this particular vehicle, the four fifty, it says a regular cab, so that's, now, that's only, what we're buying right there is only the vehicle itself. All the other stuff has to come next, too.
Correct. What it originally went through was a complete vehicle. They don't have that any longer, so the, the cost did rise because of the delay. So now we're buying the chassis, and then there will be a box that's gonna be put on it afterwards.
Which one is this replacing again? I, I forgot.
It, it's number forty-seven. It's the two thousand and six, twenty, twenty-year-old vehicle with the rust and everything that was falling apart.
The one where I took all the pictures of underneath and the rust, and the rusted compartments.
Yes.
Yeah, it's pretty much shot. I mean, uh, you know, I don't think I have to show the pictures, but I did look at all the vehicles, and I did crawl underneath the vehicles. And, uh, you know, to me is, police vehicles, just like fire department vehicles or public works vehicles, when you need to have them ready to go, they need to be ready. You can't worry about whether they're gonna start, or, or the bed's gonna fall off, because it's all rusty. And it's also a safety issue. So I can see the need for that. And as far as the trans, the transit thing, I mean, transporting police officers down to the police academy, or to an incident, where you have to pile people in, into the vehicle. You know, we've had emergencies here, super storm, sandy, for instance. So where the traffic maintenance vehicles were utilized, just like when there's water rescue. Those vehicles go out along with the regular police vehicles, right?
Absolutely, to support operations, yes.
All right. I mean, I mean, can you add anything else, chief, or?
Well, one of the things you mentioned about the bus, so besides transporting people, it also is an immediate response. In the middle of the night, uh, God forbid, there's a, a large fire, if it's cold out, or it's hot out. We have our desk assistant, the officer sign here, grab the van and come out to house the people in the van. So we get them off the street, so they can do that, and then we transport them also down to the shelter and so forth. Olive Street, we work with relocation. So there's things where that immediate need is there. And, you know, again, in the middle of the night, with, at, you know, thirty-two degrees out there or lower, you go to stick the key in, and it doesn't turn. Uh, and doesn't start, just like you said, that's certainly an issue when it needs to respond to emergencies.
I mean, I'm a firm believer that whether it's public works, or the fire department, or the police department, I believe the vehicles should be always ready to go. And sometimes, and, and those vehicles are used all the time, like at public works, and the fire department, and the police department. They don't last forever. And when it's time to replace them, they need to be replaced.
And clearly understanding that, where many people go by mileage. I have ten thousand miles on my vehicle. Understand, those vehicles idle for quite some time when they're on an incident and so forth. So although it may say ten, twenty, thirty, fifty thousand miles on the, on the odometer, it's quadrupled that in actual runtime, because the vehicles are, are idling at emergencies, a lot of responding and so forth. So that's a direct correlate, not a direct correlation to, to mileage, like we're familiar with in our own personal vehicles. It takes a much different toll.
So down the road, we'll get all the other parts that go to the, to the maintenance truck?
Yes, we have, we have, uh, we have, um, quotes out for that. Now, this vehicle will, will take the longest. The bodies are basically in stock, so it'll be a lot quicker to get. So we need to get this, so we get it ordered and get, get it in.
And, and I was asked this, why, why twenty twenty-three? Is that just a good deal?
It's, it's what they have and have availability, right. It's still a brand-new truck, and it still carries the full warranty and so forth, that the original purchase was gonna be a twenty twenty-five. But, um, this is what we are able to get, uh, in the shortest order possible. Because, you know, again, as you're aware, we talk about, about maintenance. There's thirty-four hundred dollars budgeted for, uh, vehicle maintenance for traffic maintenance. That one vehicle, which is the newest vehicle, one of the newest vehicles we have, which is only, uh, ten years old, let's say, uh, that's a nine thousand dollar repair. So that's triple what's allotted for repair for the entire fleet in traffic maintenance. So just that one repair. So we're far exceeding what our abilities are to pay to get these things repaired.
And when, when you're doing maintenance, whether, and again, I keep pointing to Matthew in the back, and, and the chief in the back. I mean, all these, when vehicles are being repaired, there's a lock.
Yes.
You have to have a lock.
Yes, we have, it's a fleet maintenance program, actually. It's a computer program.
So whether the vehicle is being fixed at police headquarters, or it's being fixed at a public works, there's a lock.
Yes.
That coincides with whatever, with that repair. Oh, okay. I, I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Um, so you said you're getting a quote, um, for all the other materials, or whatever equipment that you're gonna need for that truck? That's the four fifty, right?
The other part of it, the body of it, yes, ma'am.
Is that gonna be with, um, like a, like a box to and store some equipment, or stuff like that? Um, and how much is that gonna cost, like with the lights and sirens? Um, is that included with the quote that you were getting, or is that a sep- something separate?
What you'd be referring to is it's called the body. It's gonna be utility body, which is similar to the truck that it's replacing. It's got a, um, compartments on the outside, and then a, um, a well, or a storage area in the center, where you put larger things and pipes and, uh, poles and those types of things. So it's gonna look similar. However, this is gonna be affixed with a, a crane. One of the vehicles does have a crane, it's just not large enough. This crane is actually going to be large enough, so that we're not relying on manpower to be pulling these signs out, and, you know, people have been injured in the past and so forth. So this crane will be the appropriate one, that will be able to go over and actually lift the signs and the posts and things in the concrete, be able to lift them out from the, uh, from the ground, so, um, you know, assisting with, uh, lowering the injuries.
And then is there gonna be a separate, um, purchase for the lights and sirens as well?
Yeah, those are all minimal costs and so forth. Those are things that come, you know, later on. Some, sometimes we, if we can, depending if we have other stuff laying around from other vehicles that may have been in an accident that were totaled beyond repair, or we may be able to switch some of those things off. So some of them are, uh, some of the lights and so forth may be reused from other vehicles. But again, that's, we've had time on that. This is the thing that's gonna take the most time, this and the, and the bottom.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of how much it's, everything's gonna cost with the?
That would have all been submitted in the original, uh, documents when you got, when you guys approved the, uh, the budget, originally from the capital budget, so that will all be in there, with those individual breakdowns and so forth.
If it's already, everything's listed.
It's in a budget, yes. So all this money's been approved in your capital budget last year. So all that money for all of those things are, have been covered in the capital budget.
Is there any way from, like, I guess in the future, if you can just put it, like, in the same agenda? If, you know, so that way, we're approving everything altogether, the truck, and then the equipment that's needed for it, or whatever.
In, in following the purchasing laws, things do not rise to your, to the level of council approval for costs. So if it doesn't, it wouldn't be on the agenda, if it doesn't rise to that level of, of expenditure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, no, I, I'm good, chief.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm just saying in the future, like, whether it's for the police department, or public works, or the fire department, or Olive Street, I mean, like, and when they're asking for something, you know, aside it being in the backup, some, I remember when, a couple of years ago, and God rest his soul, when Chief, uh, Petrie was alive, when they were going to buy a new ladder truck. They actually did a presentation to the council where they actually showed the ladder truck. So, I mean, I, I think if we could do that, I think sometimes even as the council, we, seeing it up on the screen, I, I think it would eliminate some of the other questions. I mean, and I think, I think all three directors that I keep picking on here today do a pretty decent job of, you know, when we put them on, put them on the spot and question them, they tell us what the deal is. But sometimes maybe we add some art with it, would be cool. That's all. That's all I'm asking.
What, you're, you don't wanna go and take pictures?
Well, I was, oh, I did give them the John Luke.
Councilman, potentially maybe with the budget hearings, when that, when you're actually asking, when we're asking for the money for these items.
Right, 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 right.
That would be appropriate.
I think that would be a great time also, to present it.
And you guys did a great job with that, when you guys came here, uh, a couple of months ago.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. R three twenty-nine, eight twenty-five, authorizing contract for the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Ford F dash four fifty, regular cab, four by four with options to Nissel Ford under New Jersey State Contract Number Thir- Twenty-three Fleet, three forty-nine, twenty-three, in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. R three thirty, eight twenty-five, authorizing change order number one to the contract with the firm of T N M Associates for the professional engineering services for the NJ DOT, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, State Street, to Transit Market Street improvement in the amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. R three thirty-one, eight twenty-five, authorizing change order number one to the contract with American Plumber for contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed one thousand nine hundred dollars. R three thirty-two, eight twenty-five, authorizing change order number one to the contract with the firm of Mac- Man- Nimon, Scotland Embolment, to provide legal services in twenty twenty-four as requested by the city and a, in, and an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars with ninety-six cents. R three thirty-three, eight twenty-five, authorizing change order number two to the contract with the firm of P R B Attorneys at Law LLC to provide legal services in twenty twenty-four as requested by the city in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars with sixty-eight cents. Oh, my Lord.
Yeah, I, I was trying to give you a break by talking.
Yes, you did. R three thirty-four, eight twenty-five, authorizing a First Amendment to the amended and restated a s- access agreement with Morton Salt, Inc. and an Environmental Resources Management, Inc. for access to the city-owned property located at eight twenty State Street. R three thirty-five, eight twenty-five, authorizing a right-of-way agreement with Verizon Wireless for the installation of a small wireless facility within certain designated city rights of way. R three thirty-six, eight twenty-five, authorizing an agreement with the Verrattan Bay Area YMCA for hotel motel placement. R three thirty-seven, eight twenty-five, accepting the twenty twenty-five grant agreement. R three thirty-seven A twenty-five, accepting the twenty twenty-five grant agreement between the Middlesex County Department of Senior Services Assisted Technology Grant for the calendar year twenty twenty-five in the amount of ten thousand dollars. R three thirty-eight A twenty-five, accepting the twenty twenty-five grant between, agreement between the County of Middlesex and City of Perthamboy for residential maintenance services for calendar year twenty twenty-five in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. R three thirty-nine A twenty-five, authorizing the closure of High Street from Gordon State, Gordon Street to Smith Street for Perthamboy date of, Perthamboy Day on September thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
Can we just provide more information to the public if possible, for Perthamboy Day, the timing? Or it could be later. It could be later, that's fine.
All right. R three forty-eight twenty-five, authorizing refund of fees paid by two residents for the trip to Point Pleasant, sponsored by the Office of Recreation, which was canceled due to low registration in the amount of a hundred dollars. R three forty-one A twenty-five, authorizing refund of deposit for the Art Workshop Session Two, Drawing and Painting, in the amount of forty dollars to Jessica Garcia. R three forty-two A twenty-five, authorizing refund of the registration fee for the Girls Softball RBI Senior League in the amount of sixty dollars to Kersey Acosta. R three forty-three A twenty-five, authorizing a refund in the amount of eighty-five dollars to Lee Roy Chung for the Office of Recreation various summer trips. R three forty-four A twenty-five, authorizing a refund in the amount of fifty dollars, to Catherine Guzman for the Panther Elite Basketball Clinic. R three forty-five, authorizing refund of deposit for the Art Workshop Session Four, Mixed Media and Crafts, in the amount of eighty dollars to Erica Itisari. R three forty-six A twenty-five, rescinding in its entirety resolution. R four forty-six nine twenty-three, authorizing a contract with Mattson and Howell, Inc. for the purchase of Tutter Dome Top Litter Containers. R three forty-seven A twenty-five, authorizing a contract to Verran Pacific Company for the purchase of litter containers in accordance with the Sourcewell Contract Number Zero Four One Five Two One R E H in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. R three forty-eight A twenty-five, authorizing a refund of a bulk appointment fee in the amount of thirty dollars to Johanna Saravia. Three, R three forty-nine A twenty-five, authorizing a service agreement with Assumption Catholic School for Property located at three eighty Meredith Street. R three fifty-eight twenty-five, authorizing an agreement with Bayshore Single Stream Solution LLC for marketing and recycling of single-stream recyclable materials. R three fifty-one A twenty-five, authorizing a contract for the purchase of Luxe Side sitting for the console chambers to Global Furniture Group in accordance with the New Jersey State Approval Scoop ESCNJ Contract Number ESCNJ twenty-two slash twenty-three dash zero eight, in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars with three cents. R three fifty-two A twenty-five, authorizing a contract for the purchase of furniture to AIS, Inc. A R D Facility Management Group LLC, DBA as Paramount F M S under State Contract Number Twenty-five C O M G dash two, nine four one two six, in the amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars with ninety-eight cents. R three fifty-three A twenty-five, accepting the bid and authorizing a contract with Z Brothers for the twenty twenty-five roadway improvement program phase four, Barry Avenue, Clark Avenue, and Elm Street, in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars with twenty-nine cents. R three fifty-four A twenty-five, authorizing the second year of the contract with Lincoln Risk Management and Brown and Brown for insurance broker services for health benefits in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars, commencing retroactively to July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. R three fifty-five A twenty-five, authorizing a contract to stop loss insurance for one year retroactively, retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, to R M T S LLC slash Gerber Life. R three fifty-six A twenty-five, appointing Alma Y Benavides Perez as a non-certified temporary purchasing agent pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, Column eleven dash nine G. We have some communications, and closed session, anything?
I have a pending litigation update.
Pending litigation. R three thirty, three thirteen A twenty-five, authorizing a closed session at the August thirteen, twenty twenty-five council meeting to discuss the following. Pending litigation, I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fuchio?
Yeah.
Council President DeHega?
Yes. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to offer to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, it's open to the public. State your name and your address and your concern.
Adel Talkford, three forty-one, Colfax Street, Perthamboy. So back to ordinance four twenty-five. I kind of urge you guys to vote it down. That would make us the towers working seventeen straight days. And I don't think it's fair. We have limited manpower, limited employees, and those five hours, and the minimum cars that are being released that day are being, wouldn't be really beneficial for anyone to be working. And for some reason, if you do vote to enforce it, I would ask that you guys only enforce the vehicles that are only towed that day and not to keep it open for all the cars that were towed from the day before, the day before, because it'd be a waste of time for everyone, especially if there's a call pending and we have to entertain someone at the shop, and we have called the police to come to help. So that's going to be a whole lot of downtime and a waste of time. Secondly, back in April of last year, council agreed and voted on changing the method of acceptance for payments. We agreed to insert the word "and/or" for electronic payments like Zelle, Venmo, Cash App, and up to date, has not been inserted in the, in the contract or into the ordinance yet, even though council already approved it and they voted on it. Last council meeting last month, Councilwoman Peralta asked, when will it be done? And up to date, it's still have not been done. So I still, I would encourage you guys to insert and change that word from "and" to "or", as there's a lot of issues going on with credit card chargebacks and fraud. Under the discretion of the Police Department, I myself had to give back three cars free of charge, because my credit card machine was down. And I don't think it was fair. Everyone has Zelle, the whole city's transitioning to all this electronic movement forward, and there's, there's not a reason why we shouldn't be able to use it to our discretion. It should not be mandatory. So I would like for you guys to enforce that as well. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Opel regarding this, this ordinance. Wasn't it, is it specifically stated that they have to work? I thought it was for the people that were, the tow companies that were on call. It's the one that's going to respond, not necessarily all of them.
The language isn't in the, the language isn't in the ordinance, it's in the contract, the towing contract. And when the towing contracts were approved in February, there was a discussion about whether or not the discretion should be left with the towing operator or the vehicle owner as to the method of payment.
But I think she's. My question was the one that they're, they're being required to be open Sundays. I thought we had agreed that it would be the, the tow company that would already be on call is the one that's going to be required to be available between the certain hours. Not necessarily all the tow companies. That's how, that's how it's worded in that. I just want to make sure.
That was the amendment that we did when we did the first reading.
Right. Because that's what, that's what I believe what we agreed on was we had no problem with the tow company that's already on call.
They don't have to be open, they just have to be available to.
They have to be available between a certain time, correct.
To release the.
The on-call wreck.
Correct.
On-call. Right, is that the way it is? I know, Mr. Opel.
Yeah, that's what we spoke about.
That's what I want to make sure that that's what the ordinance states.
Because I, I got one thing.
Yes. It says tow companies that are on call for police towing on Sundays or holidays shall be available to vehicle owners from noon to five.
Okay.
Okay.
I think my, I think my question was misunderstood. So the hours that are open for on, on Sundays, so is that only going to be for the release of cars or for those cars that are being towed on Sunday? Or is also going to refer to the cars that are towed Thursday, or Friday, or Saturday, or the week before, the month before? So if you guys were still, remain the opening on Sundays, it should be limited to the vehicles towed on Sunday only?
It says tow companies that are on call for police towing on Sundays or holidays shall be available to vehicle owners from noon to five, for vehicle owners to pick up their vehicle the same day it was towed.
The same day.
The same day it was towed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I, I, I'm sure that's what we added last time.
And just that "and" on the order for the first part.
Well, that's my next question. So we did vote on it, like Councilwoman Peralta brought up, that it was, that we decided that it was "and" or "or". Why isn't it in there?
It's not in the ordinance, it's in the contract.
In the contract.
The, the way the contract is drafted, it gives the option to the vehicle owner on what method of payment they want to use. We've heard complaints from tow operators that there have been instances where somebody used credit card and there was a chargeback later on.
So they have the option?
The option is, the option is the vehicle owner. So if the vehicle owner wants to use Venmo, they can use Venmo. If they want to use their credit card, they can use their credit card. The option is with the vehicle owner.
But it does say "and" or?
It was, it was originally draft, that was the discussion. But we, we put it, it's "and" or, they can, either one is available, but it's at the discretion of the vehicle owner.
I mean, because, you know, my problem is this. You know, these guys, whether, you know, they're, all of the tow truck wrecker operators are hard-working guys. They're making a living, right? So, I mean, some, if, if somebody comes along and, you know, there's a lot of fraud with credit cards. I, I mean, the option should be theirs, too. I mean, you know, like, if somebody, if somebody's going to pay them in cash, because they want to pay them with cash, because there's a lot of people here in Perthamboy that don't have credit cards, right?
They have the option.
Why can't they do that?
They can pay in cash.
What?
They can pay in cash.
But that's their option.
It's the vehicle owner's option.
But it's like.
But we're talking about the, the towing companies. They should have to be able to also have the option to what form of payment they should be able to receive.
Where there were older residents who did not have the payment application on their phone, and they weren't able to pay, and they were, they had to go to an ATM, and they were held up. So that's been, that's happened twice, as far as I've seen. And that's one of the reasons for this policy.
Complaints that we've provided to you from seniors who didn't have it and were sent away and had to go try to get cash to retrieve their vehicle rather than accepting their credit card or debit card.
But I, I feel, and this is what I feel, that if I'm, when you go shopping, you have your option, how you going to pay? You decide. I don't think it should be.
It's the same thing as if.
The person who's selling you whatever or providing you with a service. I mean, the, the resident should have an option to either use a credit card, to do Venmo, or to do Zelle, or to do whatever. And the resident is the one who has to choose what is the best way for them.
But if you look at it in a business point of view, let's say, a restaurant or a clothing store, you know, they have a right to say, well, we're only accepting this. They have the right, I, I believe both business owners and customers should have a right to choose of what form of payment. It shouldn't just be the, the consumer that has the right. I think the business owners should have the right, whether it's a tow company, whether it's a clothing company, whether it's a gas station. I think they have the right to, to decide what form of payment they want to accept.
And, you know, every, every year, hundreds of cars are towed in the city of Perthamboy. So obviously, out of those hundreds of cars that get towed, every once in a while, there's going to be a complaint. And, you know, and at the end of the day, at the end of the day, look, we live in hard times to begin with. And we also live in unscrupulous times. It's not beyond somebody to use their credit card, go around the block, and then dispute the claim. So now, now, that, that business owner is going to be out that fee and has to fight to get the money from the credit card company or the owner. And all I'm just trying to say is, you know, I don't think we can just legislate that much of a micromanagement. Yeah, I know all about the senior citizen, how to go to the ATM and get the money. But I could also speak from experience of all those years that I would tow cars myself when I was a police officer. And it seemed that overall, the system worked. The way it worked, it worked. And, you know, now, you know, whether or not, whether or not we have taken cash, I, I, I still think it's up to the, the business owner's discretion, whatever it is, to be able to say, listen, I'm having a bad time with credit cards. Now, for instance, you know, you got to have, you got to pay for your car. You'll make arrangements to pay for your car if you want it. And let's not forget this one little thing about people getting their cars towed. Usually, it involves some kind of motor vehicle infraction, whether it's no insurance, and if it's a car accident, normally the insurance company picks up the tow. So, you know, we're, we're fixating on one or two incidents when the overall picture says the way the system works has been working. Because I don't know what the, the number is, but it's got to be hundreds of cars that get towed every year. And you get one or two complaints?
And in addition to that, business owners also get charged a fee from the credit card companies to pay a fee. Right?
And they usually charge it to the resident.
Not according to orders.
Mm-hmm.
They could charge it to the resident, they charge, the same thing with any business owners. They could choose to accept cards. There are places where I've gone to shop, and they, like a restaurant, they don't accept, they just accept cash only. And this is an ice cream store.
I, I would say it's a, it's certainly a policy decision. So the council wants to change the way the contract is, it can recommend that an amendment to the contract be approved.
But I thought we did that already.
No.
But I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of complaints that have come over about when they use cash only, and not only that, I heard complaints of having a cash only and not having an itemized receipt for the, for the resident. And that's another problem when that comes about. Because then, it also, they also can get gypped or charged, overcharged on it. I, I think both ways.
That's a whole different story.
Well, no, it's the same thing, it's the way of paying, it's the way of paying. If you're going to, not going to give me a receipt, an itemized receipt, where it says what I paid for it, is a problem.
Yeah, that's a whole different conversation. We're talking a form, form of payment here.
Well, this is a form of payment. If I'm going to pay you two hundred and fifty dollars, and you're not going to write me a receipt saying you paid this amount for. You paid this amount for this.
But that's what I'm saying. That's a form of payment. That's not, I mean, that's, that's itemized.
Or, or whatever, or a receipt. And some people don't give a receipt.
And they should. And I agree. They should get an itemized receipt. That, that's a whole nother conversation.
If I may, counsel.
Form of payment.
If I may.
I'm sorry.
So if I may, I wanted to say. At the end of the day, this is your decision to make in terms of which direction you want us to go in. Uh, the administration will follow your lead. What I will say is, yes. Business owners do have the right to decide how and what form of payment they want to accept in the private sector. But when you have a contract with the municipality, we have a responsibility to do what's in the best interest of the greatest number of residents. That means accepting all forms of payments because a lot of seniors and other people, even if it's just somebody who's. New to this country and don't have access to all of those things. We have to do what's in the best interest of the greatest number of residents. And when you get a city contract, that's what you have to keep in mind as the business owner. Now, if you want to do that, then don't seek public contracts.
Uh, I, I'll say this. You know, we put a lot of, of. Restrictions or requests on the, on the wreckers. Right? That they have to comply with. Not only that, like in the middle of the night when the police car breaks down. Or a fire vehicle breaks down or, or a public works vehicle breaks down, or even a city vehicle breaks down. The on-call wrecker picks up that vehicle. At their expense. They don't charge the city when they're, when they're doing, uh. Towing a city vehicle. And then they're, you know, they're told they gotta do this. They're told they gotta do that. And I, and I venture to say, no doubt in my mind that, and I always get this number wrong, whether it's eleven or ten, uh, wreckers. I'm sure that those other wrecking companies, wrecker companies are taking cash. No doubt in my mind. You know, I think we're, we're fixated on one person. And all, and all I'm saying is, is that knowing the way things work. And I'm an expert on Perth Amboy. I don't know what it's like anywhere else. But I, I could assure you that these other tow truck operators, you know, are, they're probably taking cash too. So you know, are we going to spend time wasting time on whether, who's going to follow through with whether or not. You know, these guys that work in traffic are busy enough. So we're going to investigate every tow truck driver to make sure they're not, they're not taking cash? So you know what? You know, the last, all I can say, yeah, we're the legislative body and you're right. They're doing business for us, right? I get it. I understand. But we're also telling them, well, listen, you gotta eat this. You gotta eat this expense. You gotta eat that expense. You know what I mean? Oh, you know, it's your tough luck if somebody, uh, decides that when they go around the corner and they decide to dispute the charge. Why is that so unfair to them? They're doing us a service and we're making it more difficult for them. You know what it is? To me, to me, fundamental fairness is what's important, is the keystone to cooperation. Everybody should be treated the same. And you know, at the end of the day, I think sometimes it becomes personal. And that's wrong. And all I'm saying is, is that, you know, they have rights too. The people, the tow truck wreckers have rights. And they're forcing their concerns that it's unfair to them. And we're like, ah, too bad. It's your tough luck. That's not what we're here for. You know, and you gotta take the personalities out of it. Now, whatever anybody wants to do, but that's, that's, my point is, is that, you know. At the end of the day, hundreds of cars get towed. You have a handful of complaints every year. And you know what? And out of those handful of complaints, how many of them are really founded that they were sustained? Most of those complaints are unsustained. And you know, so you know what? Look, I may have the advantage because I did work in the police department for forty years, but I've been a citizen of Perth Amboy for seventy years. So you know what? We need to worry and help the people that help us.
But we also have to look out for our resident. I, I mean, I don't go to either side, but both sides have to be in compliance. And if a citizen pays for whatever service, I think the least that, that they can do is give a receipt. And that had been brought up, that that doesn't happen. So, um.
Madam President, and I thoroughly agree with you that if, if the tow truck guys have to do their part too. So you know, they, according to the ordinance, they have to give them a detailed receipt. And I agree with you. I thoroughly agree with that. Can't just, you know, say, hey, it cost a hundred and twenty dollars. You gotta tell us why it cost a hundred and twenty dollars and put it in writing.
That's right.
Yep. Right. Sorry.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sharon Huberman. Maria Rodriguez. We're residents here in the city of Perth Amboy on Cornell Street. Um, it's interesting that you're, you're talking about payment and processing. Because today we're here to discuss payment and processing. So as you all may be aware, government invoices are considered official documents. According to the federal law. So imagine our disbelief that I will give you a copy of. That we have made payments towards a water bill, which also include a replacement of a water line in the middle of the street. So the total cost without the interest was two thousand, two hundred, nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. The interest on that was an additional six seventy-three because it was like three days late. It accumulated.
How much was the interest?
Uh, six dollars and seventy-three cents. And the bill here was two thousand, two hundred, nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. So we paid two thousand, two hundred, twenty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, which is receipt of payment. So I have here all the invoice. So we were excited. This is all said, done, put to rest. Imagine my surprise when we were looking at all of the records that to make sure online everything is updated and, and paid. It was removed what we paid. And instead, this statement was altered. It was altered. In the original statement, it shows here. The total repair bill with the description of the water bill. And then updated, yeah, plus the repair. All of a sudden, it says here, our last payment, which was on August eighth. That's why we came today. That we only paid seventy-two dollars and two cents. And then the, you, the, what we paid for the water replacement in the street disappeared. You cannot alter these statements, these invoices. And I would like to know who gave the direction and authority to alter this billing statement and invoice. Because if it's happening to us. It is common knowledge throughout the city of Perth Amboy that we've had problems with our sewer lines, water lines. And that the, every city resident needs to fix those lines regarding the water line in the middle of the street. But where is the record? If we were to pull up all the records of all the bills that were paid concerning fixing those water lines, what, they disappeared? They disappeared for us. So this needs to be investigated and it needs to be reported. It needs to be reported. Because this is serious money. Imagine how many other people that this has happened to. And we would not have caught it. Because we were reconciling everything. That's how we caught it. And based upon what you're saying, a receipt, what is a receipt worth? We have here the receipt. You could, we're going to give you a copy of it. If your own database and your own information internally, which I do agree with transparency. You need to be able to reconcile to the comptroller's office what's coming in and what is going out. And the disappearance of a bill of two thousand something. And then the, the thing that's crazy is that the total bill, the new bill, right, that they put up. It says here. That is a total of seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents. But then it says the amount that we paid was seventy-two oh two. So someone assessed something separate and they put it up. So this to me is considered like a concealment of, of, uh. I want to know who authorized that change, to make that change on an official government document. And also on the website. Because they go hand, they go hand in hand. I mean, this is, this is serious fraud. I mean, that's what it is. When you alter a government document. That was in the system. I need an investigation and I want the name of the person who did that alteration. Because they shall be made accountable to this. And we're going to have to investigate how many more people that this has happened to. That's why I came here today.
Thank you. You can give a copy to the BA and maybe he can look into it. And get, give him your information so he can reach out to you. Thank you. Anybody else?
In Essa Cebedo, in a living two fifty-nine Barclay Street. And I applied for the handicap sign and since last year and they denied. Apply again, take all the paper, the doctor paper, everything, and they still deny it. And then they're saying, the answer that they gave me the second time is, oh, you gotta wait a whole year to apply again. So I wait and apply again this year. It says March. So they deny it because there's a parking lot where I live. But that's private. I'm not allowed to park in there. So I look for a letter, certify a letter and take it to the police. You know, take it to sentencing or whatever they got. And they're saying, oh, we gotta check again. And then they called me and said, oh. She say it's denied because why you got, you don't need a, a handicap sign. I said, boy, are you a doctor? I want to know if you're a doctor or not, because I've been all the paper, the, the letter from the doctor and everything. So she said, go to the council. Go to the city hall, go to the council and talk to them over there.
What's the address?
What's the address?
What was the address?
Two fifty-nine Barclay Street.
Two, two fifty-nine?
Uh huh.
Two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine. Two five nine.
That's by the church, right?
Yeah.
The dead end?
The dead end.
Two fifty-nine.
And I'm tired because you know, I'm, I'm, uh, my foot is getting worse. Because I keep putting walk because there's no parking that said dead end. And I gotta park. Like a block away sometime.
What was the reason for the denial?
She says the.
Because she said the last deny, the last night, she said, she called me, that's El Indias, the police, El Indias. And she said, oh, my boss say it's denied because she say what you have is, isn't, you don't need a handicap sign. And I asked her, are you a doctor?
That was the reason that you don't need a handicap?
That's what she said. But if I got my plaque of handicap and my doctor say I'm in handicap and I need a handicap sign, why she say I'm not, I don't, I don't need it. Sometimes I feel like they discriminate me. Because this is coming from being almost two years with the same problem.
Okay. Chief, you're going to take.
And my situation is getting worse.
Okay. So Chi- chief will look into that because the police department is the one taking care of the handicap.
Including, I, I, I came today to talk to the council because she said go on, but my, my, in my mind, I, I want to talk to the mayor. I want to talk to. To the vice president, whatever it is. If no one, nobody pay attention, I, I gotta call the news then. Because this is something worse.
Police chief is right there.
No, no, I know who I'm talking about, Miguel Arrojo. So.
Okay. Uh, but the chief of police, uh, the parking, the handicap parking falls under his.
The chief of police.
The chief of police. So he can look into the application and.
Yeah, because the one, uh, last year when I, I talked to her and she keep. Telling me stuff. I said, I want to talk to your boss because I know everybody got a boss. And, and I called him and he said, no, you gotta talk to her. I said, but she don't want to pay attention when I'm telling her that I need my handicap. Because this is, um, and since last year and today, I have like eight more surgeries. Between, in my leg, in my foot. And I just got surgery like two, two weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you.
So I hope somebody do something.
Okay. Chief.
Good evening. Uh, just quickly looking back at my emails with that particular address. I'll get the exact date of the action that you took, but. Um, in here I see a denial based on, uh, does not meet federal Americans Disability Act, um, which is in the ordinance, does not meet the criteria for that. Um, apparently you took, uh, city council took action for multiple chan- uh, multiple abuses of the handicap spot. She was holding spots for other people. Moving the car. Moving the car back and, and so forth. So.
So she, uh, I'm sorry. You got your time. I'm sorry. Let him explain. So, um, does she have a parking space, a, a handicap before?
There, there was a handicap for the address. I don't know that it was specifically for her or not. This is just what, just a, just a synopsis that I'm reading what, um, it, what the denial letter encompassed that, uh, had gone up to council. So again, for multiple uses, it was removed. And then it says also premises is equipped with a driveway. So that was the denial that I have, um.
The house has a driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it a shared driveway?
Again, I. I do not know. It's just, again, what I got here. I mean, I have a full file I'd have to look up, but this is just a synopsis, snapshot of an email that was sent to as backup for the council action. Uh, this dates back to, uh, May twenty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
When you took action for the removal, for the abuse.
All right.
Is it a driveway or I know she mentioned parking lot?
I, I know what.
So there was, so she, so she did have a handicap and it was removed due to.
He doesn't know if it belonged to her. She has a.
Oh, I see. Okay.
It, it appears that there was a handicap for the address. I do not know if it was.
Let him finish. Let him finish.
Okay. So that's, that's what I have here on a, on a quick snapshot. Obviously, if it comes to, you know, an appeal, we can have the whole process. We can have whatever we want to do. But this is just a quick snapshot.
Okay.
Give you a little bit of idea what.
Okay.
What was encountered back in twenty twenty-four.
If it's possible to send the council the information and then, um, we'll look into it.
Absolutely. We'll forward you the, oh, for Mr. Kiel, the, um, the applica- uh, application, all of the things that we have for the ended denial and any of the backup and so forth from that investigation in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll look into it. Uh, he's going to send the information.
I do have the name handicap sign before and they removed it because they say I was holding parking. But when they showed the picture, I was in the hospital dying because like you see, I'm getting the air system. So I don't have control who parks in my parking when I'm in the hospital because I don't have camera to see. So when I want to explain to her, she never told me nothing. She don't let me explain. She say you gotta apply again.
Okay.
And I apply again. And then after that, that he said that because of the parking, I took a letter certified by my, my landlord. That I cannot park in there and I took the letter today. And after that, she called me and said it's denied again.
Okay. We'll get the information.
The issue in here was not so much that there was another vehicle parked in a spot, but the vehicle that was supposed to be in a handicap spot was parked behind it, saving a spot. So leaving the handicap spot open, moving the approved vehicle back to hold the spot for someone else. And then when that person gets there, like we see a lot. That person then moved into the spot and then opened that spot up for somebody else. So it wasn't another vehicle parked in the spot. It was the vehicle that should have been parked in the spot parked behind it. That's what the, the information I have here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Chief, I'm sorry. Were there any?
No, it's okay. I, we just have to do the.
Regarding that, um. Saying that they, it was abused, were there pictures of her vehicle parked behind her handicap? To prove.
I'm sorry.
Right. To prove that their, her vehicle was be, parked behind her handicap? Was there any pictures to prove that the, her vehicle is parked behind the handicap?
The information that I received make reference to that. I don't have it on my email, but it makes reference photographs and so forth. We're attached to a file. So.
Okay. So if you could send us all that information. Okay, so if you could send us all that information.
Yes, I did not hear on my phone, but they, yeah, apparently they do exist according to the reference where I got.
Thank you.
I just had one more question regarding her case. So if she did have the handicap spot prior and now she doesn't meet the regulations for the federal American Disability Act, what? I know you wouldn't have that now, but later on when you answer, like what changed in either the diagnosis or how does she have it before? And then more information still on the landlord stating that she doesn't have access to that area. I can see it, um, primarily, um, small on that aspect, but I want to know like the landlord's rationale or what's the truth? Or kind of information more on that driveway lot? And the diagnosis, if applicable, did it change completely? The circumstances change? Um, yeah.
Absolutely. And again, I, the address appears to have had, I don't know for sure that it was in fact, or it could have been someone else in the house and maybe transferred. That I don't know, but I'll get all that information for you.
I get what you're saying, because she was already approved for a handicap before and now she's getting denied.
Absolutely. Yeah. Potentially got better, condition changed.
Because of conditions, yeah.
Yes.
The conditions, so.
If it was in fact her who had, yeah, that's just a few questions. And the lot, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Come on.
Six oh one Cornell Street, Perth Amboy, Daniel. Hello, council members. I would normally say good evening, however, today is not one of those days. The Perth Amboy Police Department is being sued for five million dollars over the false and malicious arrests of a Perth Amboy resident. This news is alarming and concerning, but not surprising for a police department that has a history of abuse and misconduct. In twenty sixteen, the Perth Amboy Police Department settled with Edwin Rodriguez and his lawsuit alleging excessive force and malicious prosecution for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Perth Amboy residents' tax dollars. In the most recent lawsuit against Perth Amboy Police Department, the defendant alleges that a Perth Amboy resident was arrested because he was black and was driving a luxury car. Christopher Bellinger was arrested on September eighth, twenty twenty-three without committing a crime. And all criminal charges against Bellinger were dismissed on February first, twenty twenty-five. It was overturned because there was nothing to charge the law-abiding Perth Amboy resident during the traffic stop. No drugs were found in the vehicle or on Bellinger as a Perth Amboy, as the Perth Amboy Police Department had claimed a now debunked lie. As a Perth Amboy resident, I am ashamed the police department is weaponizing its department against residents and engaging in racial profiling. As property taxes are increasing under, in Perth Amboy under the Kaba administration, it is disheartening to find out that the Perth Amboy residents are paying for more misconduct of police officers in our town. Today, I am demanding more transparency from the mayor's office and the Perth Amboy City Council as to what steps they are taking to ensure mistakes like this do not happen again. Will there be higher standards when it comes to hiring police officers? Will the lieutenant and those involved in Christopher's, Christopher's false imprisonment resign from their positions and take full accountability? Will there be a citizens review board to investigate the police department when it is engaged in misconduct? It begs the question as to what other illegal or improper behavior the Perth Amboy Police Department is engaged in. This comes at a time when Perth Amboy residents will negatively be impacted by the Republicans' big, beautiful bill, which will slash health insurance for low-income residents and cut funding for affordable housing programs. They cannot afford to have their tax dollars being misused by the Perth Amboy Police Department when it could be used to fund Perth Amboy public schools, assist the unhoused, and improve the quality of life in our town for its most vulnerable residents. While I understand this lawsuit is ongoing and it is alleged that Bellinger's civil rights were violated, the writing is on the wall. As a graduate student studying public policy, I have had the privilege to learn more about prison policy and the negative impacts of our carceral system in the U.S. It has created a culture of government surveillance, punishment, and violence that disproportionately harms black and brown people, people experiencing addiction and mental health issues, and people who are homeless. I hope in this moment that the city council's members and Perth Amboy leadership think beyond over criminalization and tough-on-crime laws that a myriad of research has proven not to be effective. We all want our town and Perth Amboy to be safe and violent free, but we have to use evidence-based solutions in order to get there. We all must invest in essential community services as well as non-police first responders who are trained in crisis intervention. The safest communities usually have the most resources, not the biggest police budgets or the most jails. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Everybody up there. Uh, just great news today, we posted on our social media, in the FY twenty-six state budget, we were allotted and given one million dollars uh, towards the purchase of the land for the new station too, which you know we've been working at for many years. This is in addition to the five hundred thousand dollars that the state, uh, gave us last year on top of some cash on hand. So now the city has enough money to negotiate for the properties. We did not release the location of the properties that we're looking at, um, so stay tuned for that. But I want to thank the administration, the mayor, all of our legislators, our governor, because that is, uh, you know, almost two million dollars we now have on hand to get the properties needed to, uh, better provide fire protection to the, to the residents on the whole entire east side of the city. So that's just great news that, uh, we put on social media today. The giant check was awarded on Monday and I haven't been up here to, in a while to talk, so I had to bring some positivity. And, uh, but, uh, you know, thank you for anybody that, uh, had a hand in that. And, uh, hopefully within the next three to four years, we do get that fire station constructed and open. So I'll be anxiously waiting that day. But, uh, we did have the plans from the original location, which will fit the same sized block and lot. So those same plans, we could just move here. So the next stage after we acquire the land would be to do the construction documents and then, you know, it'll, it'll be up for, uh, I guess the city to then get the funding to, uh, to build it. So, you know, good times ahead in, as terms of fire protection on the whole east side of the city. I just, one other thing, uh, on something earlier, uh, Chief Catano did mention like a repair could cost nine thousand dollars and those are like police cars and small vehicles. Just for example, a third of my budget goes to apparatus maintenance. The start of this year, I did have a repair, almost twenty-four thousand dollars for one truck. So, you know, the, the older the trucks do get, the more costly repairs and I can only imagine what Matthew and DPW pays, because he has the biggest fleet of heavy machinery and, uh, and trucks. So, but yeah, as the trucks do get older, it's refreshing to replace them on a regular schedule. So, thank you, because you've always been, uh, good to us and approving us, uh, apparatus that we need to get the job done. So have a great night. Any questions?
No. It's great news and I'm glad that this is coming, moving along, because we've been waiting for this.
A lot of good stuff is happening.
That would be great for that area of the city, uh, to get your assistance when they need it. Thank you very much for everything you do and your department.
Hello, name is Ruben, Ellis Smith Street. I'm here, uh, just to suggest one thing. It seems like most of the issues in Perth Amboy that are complained about are revolving around the automobile, the car, the car issue basically. I feel that Perth Amboy so far has actually proven, um, taken a positive step towards, uh, potentially creating a solution to this problem. As opposed to just whacking different branches of a tree, we should actually, uh, try to tackle the entire tree together. And this one step that Perth Amboy has taken so far is the introduction of a trolley. Which is basically a free, uh, a sample of a free public transportation system that could potentially be, uh, expanded in the future. So I'm going to suggest that we actually, uh, poten, potentially in the future, create more trolleys throughout the entire city. So we reduce the amount of cars in Perth Amboy. Because every time I go to city council meetings, the first thing I, I hear like ninety percent of the time are complaints around the automobile, about car issues. Whether it's ticketing, whether it's car accidents, whether it's double parking, et cetera, et cetera. And I feel instead of just like, you know, uh, spending more resources for the police to enforce, uh, traffic laws, we should actually just expand public transportation in Perth Amboy. And not just expand it, but actually create it, create a network of free public transportation in Perth Amboy, starting with a trolley. So instead of just having one trolley right now, we should have in the future, multiple trolleys. You know, and actually have more drivers and have more investments towards that, so that we have less cars in Perth Amboy. Because less cars would actually improve the city in many ways. I mean, one of them is car accidents, the obvious things like car accidents, um, ticketing, et cetera. But also improve the city environmentally. Because car pollution from, from tailpipe emissions is one of the worst forms of pollution in the entire world. I mean, it's not only this could true to climate change, which as, as we've seen recently, I mean, it's getting worse. I mean, the flooding is impacting the community in, in many horrible ways at the moment. I mean, and it will continue getting worse as the planet gets warmer. But also in regards to asthma and other conditions created by tailpipe, tailpipe pollution. So again, please, expand the trolley system. One trolley is great, but we need more trolleys. You know, and we could actually, uh, inspire the entire country to, um, turn towards tra, public transportation. But not just public transportation, but free public transportation. And also decrease the amount of cars, because no country on the planet has more cars than the United States of America. And that creates a lot of problems like forty thousand cars in deaths every single year. Not to mention that we are historically the biggest contributor of climate change on the entire planet. Again, we can set an example for the entire country, her Perth Amboy, by expanding the trolley system, among other things which I'll mention later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? All right, we need a motion to go to close session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, we're going to public, uh, to close session. When we come back, we will adjourn this meeting and then start the city council meeting. Thank you.
We're returning from closed session. I need a motion to return.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. We're ready to start the council meeting for August 13, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Madam Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board, in the city clerk's office, and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Right now is 8:10. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Absent.
And Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, please guide this governing body to make the right decision for our residents, for our visitors, and whoever comes to this town. And also guide us in every decision that we make. Please protect our children, our youth, our law enforcement officers, the officers that are away, defending our freedom, and those who are in the nation, protecting us in a safety way. Please protect their family, and God bless all of them and all of us. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Right. We already had the presentation of the caucus meeting. Now we go to the ordinance, public hearing. Five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Ordinance number one. Ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County, Omeedoseck, approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 redevelopment plan area two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Anyone to speak on this ordinance?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Sharon Hubbardman. I'm a resident of Perth Amboy on Cornell Street. Regarding this ordinance, I had a quick look at the proposal, and it appears to me like harbor terrace is part of the grab of the property that's going to be then redevelop accordingly. But that harbor terrace right now is not subject to the 30-year pilot. So with doing the redevelopment, I noticed the following. They want to put like 10,000 multifamilies. That's like part of it. There's a lot of restrictions as to what types of businesses can go in that. However, they don't conform to one of the prohibited companies, which is marijuana dispensaries, which is another ordinance that's not indicated as a restricted company in that designation. And I just have concerns regarding the redevelopment of that particular site because we're, after 30 years, we have not been receiving the apropos taxes due to it being a pilot. Now we're going to go, what, into another 30 years of that piece of property also being subjected to pilots? I mean, that is an issue. I hope that you're going to look into that. But if you're going to prohibit items, you need to also reflect on what is already prohibited in terms of the existing ordinances. And since it's not stating that dispensaries are also restricted, I mean, they took beauty salons, they even did banks. You can't even put a bank in there. There's a long laundry list of items that you cannot put at that designated spot. But then when I saw 10,000 multifamily homes, and for a two-bedroom, it's only required one and a half off-street parking? For a multi, like multifamily homes are a little different than like an apartment complex. So those are, that's just like what highlight, highlighted in my purview. And I just have concerns that that property, we are not going to get more taxes from it now that that other pilot has expired. That's a concern. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything to say?
The reference, it's the minimum lot area. It's 10,000 feet. It's not 10,000.
10,000 feet, not 10,000 units?
Correct.
Okay.
10,000 feet.
10,000 feet as opposed to units?
Minimum lot area, 10,000 square feet.
Square feet. Okay. Anybody else on that ordinance? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about addition and deletions. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, I need a motion to a closed public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County, Omeedoseck, in New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Wreckers. Ordinance number 621-93, adopted August 4, 1992, also known as Chapter 425 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number four. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County, Omeedoseck, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Storm Water Management. Ordinance number 1970-2021, adopted April 28, 2021, also known as Chapter 384 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is in reference of storm water control for non-major developments. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to...
Close.
Oh, I'm sorry. To close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number five. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County, Omeedoseck, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Council Rules of Procedure. Ordinance number 5-72, as amended, adopted September 19, 1972, also known as Chapter 8-436 seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is in reference, addressing the council. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need, okay. I was going to close it already.
Okay. Council President, Sharon Hubbardman, Cornell Street, Perth Amboy. All right. I know with this change, you want to reduce the time limit from five minutes to three minutes. And you had earlier spoke, or at least some of the councils spoke about enhancing transparency in terms of why you're adding certain items into the agenda, which perhaps weren't done previously. And I, just for a person from the community, some of which needs to also speak in Spanish, maybe have a translator, three minutes is just not enough. Five minutes goes by very quickly. And then, you know, there's no rebuttal. There's no like going back and forth. So why, why are you changing from five minutes to three minutes? I mean, you've already consolidated your meetings, where before you used to meet four times in a month. Now you meet only two times a month, back-to-back meetings. And then on, so that kind of removes a time from the public to meet those two other times in a month. Now you're going to be reducing it further. So I thought that there was a conscientious effort to be transparent, to want to hear from the public. But five minutes goes like this. Three minutes is even worse. And for those who have sat in the Board of Education, you know, I remember when that was first changed. It was with the auspices. We're going to change it to three minutes, but we will give the additional two minutes to any person who wishes to have it. That was the intent. At that time, President Sam LaBrow, that's how he was explaining it to the public. So with that in mind, people were like, okay, well, that makes sense if you want to do the three minutes and the two. But that is not in practice. And I knew that wouldn't be in practice because the moment that you reduce it, and then there's people reading, "Brrr!" You can't even understand what the person is trying to communicate. So I really wish that you reflect on it. I mean, you've already condensed the time that you spend with the public. And it's a meaningful condensing without dropping the rate of the salary of each member that sits there. So I think five minutes is reasonable. Most towns are at five minutes. It's not very ordinary three minutes. So I wish, you know, where did this concept come from? Like, who proposed to change the time from five minutes to three minutes?
You finished? Or you're giving up your time? Just finish all your questioning, all your concern.
That is it. I just think it's very concerning that there's a lot of talk of wanting to be there representing for the people, which I think in your hearts, that is what you do on a day-to-day basis. But when it comes to the time limit, just, it goes by very quickly, the five minutes. And most times, people even finish before the five minutes. So why change it? Because three minutes, it's like you feel like the sense of pressure to have to speak very quickly to try to get your point across. And sometimes it doesn't come across within those three minutes. And that's why I want to know, why is it being considered to reduce it? Thank you.
Thank you. So the, we really cut down the two, the two meetings a month that you're talking about, but we can't, we have it on the Wednesday. So you really have the meeting itself on the Wednesday for the caucus. And the amount of time that you can speak on it, it'll be three minutes there. And you also have the three minutes to speak at the... And you also have the three minutes to speak at the hearing of every ordinance. And also, at the end of the meeting, you also have three more minutes. So, you do have plenty of time, I, uh, to come to the mic, have your question, and then get some type of answers, or maybe direct it to the right person to speak on it. So, it's not really like, it's, you have no time to speak. So, I think that's what it is. But anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number six, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey approving certain amendments to the Focus Twenty Twenty redevelopment plan. Area three, northern industrial pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Anyone on this ordinance? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number seven, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey to amend and supplement char- chapter three thirty-five property maintenance of the code of the City of Perthamboy to include additional regulation related to relocation assistance for tenants displaced due to illegal occupancy. Eligibility, amount, landlord liability. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Anyone on this?
Sharon Hubbardman again, Cornell Street. Okay, regarding that specific ordinance, the, what I saw in the ordinance, it does not include language as to where those monies would go. When you're doing your, your, it, does it go into the general fund of the City of Perthamboy? Does it go to human services, which is part of their budget to allocate the funding? So, I, I didn't see that. And then in terms of the enforcement, one of the problems that we had, I had served on the rent levelling board. So, one of the problems that we had was the enforcement, where the board would decide that there are penalties to be assessed. But this was an ongoing question, where does it go? Who enforces it? And in this case, it appears that it's supposed to go to court in order for there to be an enforcement. But I did not see language as to who's the one who, who finds out who broke that? Is it the council? Who, see, I, I look at it like this. I look at, to enforce this, that it would be an item brought to the council. The council then decides, yes, there is an infraction, it's a penalty, so therefore, it'll go to the municipal court. But I did not read the language in there. And I'm just sharing with you the experience that we have had in the rent levelling board is that I was looking at another statute, a municipal statute, that if we were to assess another sub-body that is considered government official work, that if we refer that to the council, the council can then say, yes, the penalty must be assessed and then defer that to the municipality. But we're, we're, we were missing that language. And that's why I'm bringing that up. Because when you read that ordinance, it's all well and good what you're trying to achieve in terms of the costs and of the persons who are breaking the law to invest in wanting to pay for the displacement, if they don't, there's a penalty. But the question is, and it boils down to, it, it, it may be missing that bridge of, okay, well, the enforcement, the council should know about it, and then the council refer before it goes to court. Because in our case, it was like, oh, you go to court enforcement, but wait a minute. If you go to court enforcement, rent levelling board is not coming from us. So, any person could say, you're, you're, that's not your jurisdiction. So, I think it's missing, it's missing that language. And I just wanted to share our experience being on the rent levelling board, where we were creating this limbo, like this very rounded, and then no enforcement happened. So, then what's the point of the ordinance? And the other part is, when we, the other question was, if we collect these penalty monies, where does it go? Does it go to the general fund? Does it go into here? Does it go into there? We're like, okay, well, if it goes to the general fund, then that then can be used by the city for anything. But I think in this case, you want this money to go into a fund that's specifically notated for use of displacement and not anything else. I don't read the language in that in the ordinance. Thank you.
Is there anything who's enforcing that?
It's under, uh, chapter three thirty-five, so it's property maintenance ordinance and, um, property maintenance, and when there's overlap, the fire code officials will be the ones enforcing it. They'll write tickets, they'll go to court. As far as the payments, um, there's no provision right now in the statutes for a dedicated fund for this. But the city is reaching out to state DCA to, um, coordinate with them on relocation assistance plans for the people who are ultimately displaced. And, you know, through that process, through that, when that plan's created, it'll set forth the provisions for how these funds are gonna be used and how they'll be spent.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on that? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Agenda, public comment, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public on any agenda item only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, it's open to the public on agenda item only.
Del Tofa three forty-one, Colfax Street. So, back again to ordinance four twenty-five for my agenda for today. So, again, I'm gonna ask you guys to specifically indicate on the writing, on the language, that it will be stated only for Sunday and only for the cars that are being towed Sunday. And as far as back to the payment issue, again, I'm asking it to be changed to the word and/or, that it shouldn't be mandatory for us to accept all form of payments. I, for one, had issues where I was told everything is a civil matter, even though those crimes committed when people broke into my yard, and it was like, it's nonsense. So, I would like to see that the word and/or should be discretionary, that we accept format payments. Um, we're in an age now that everybody has technology, everybody's have a phone, Apple Pay. So, it should be discretionary. It shouldn't be all form of payments. It should be optional. We have to accept one or the other. It's at the click of a button. It's very simple. So, I would like to see that it's changed. I'm speaking for all the towing companies. As far as the comment that was made before about the itemized receipts, I don't know who did it, but I know we all give itemized receipts out. And if you could prove me wrong by all, by all means, you could cover the company name and send me the receipt that's not itemized, by all means. And I will definitely address it with all towing companies myself. However, the change that we need to do is huge for the and-on-or word. We shouldn't be susceptible to accepting all credit card payments. We get charged, for every transaction, we get charged a fee. When you go to a restaurant as a consumer and you pay with a credit card, there's an option that for more money that they charge you, it's not the same fee. If you pay with a credit card, they charge you more, unless you wanna change that here and you wanna forward the, the, the fee to the consumer, which I don't think is fair. Zelle is absolutely a hundred percent free, so is Venmo, so is all other forms of payments. It's free, and it should be optional. So, that way, we don't have to call the police department, file a report for services, waste more cops, have detectives involved, and then it becomes a legal matter, and then we have to go to court. It's not fair for none of us. It's not fair. And it's a very simple change, change it from and-to-or. Give us the option. That way, if something goes sour, it's on us. A lot of people do leave, and a lot of people do charge backs. We shouldn't have to deal with that. We deal with a lot of stuff. Sunday, I was on call. I got walking about four o'clock in the morning to tow a police tow, a police tow on a police car that had a flat tire. Yeah, the police department has two tow trucks that you guys approved. Why did that tow truck didn't go out? And it's an on- ongoing thing. So, yes, we provide a lot of services for free, and we don't ask for nothing back. We're not like, hey, pay us, hey, we need this. Just, we need a little bit of protection to cover us from extensive and unnecessary means. So, I ask you again, please, leave it optional to us. I understand that you worry about the consumers, and you understand about the citizens. But the amount, like, like Councilman Puccio said, the amount is very minimal of people who don't pay with credit cards compared to the ones who do pay with Zelle. Very minimal. So, please keep that in mind. Our contract's coming up for negotiation again, or for renewal in October again. We don't really have much time to do anything. One, two council meetings away. So, just like, just like this was introduced for the Sunday, and it traveled pretty quick through a system, when we, the towers, wanna do something, it drags for years. It doesn't get done right away. So, you have to think about us as well. We need that protection as well. I have no problem bringing all the towing companies, you'd say the same thing I'm telling you. This is why you're changing it from five to three, because you wanna go home too. You want, you do it for your best interest. We want things for our interest as well. So, please look into that matter, Congress. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Sharon Hubbardman again, Cornell Street. Um, or, um, resolution three twenty-five dash eight twenty-five. I would like to know specifically, where is the West Interceptor Sewer Main that's being fixed? With clean and line? What street is that located? Uh, three twenty-five dash eight twenty-five? It's, um, an amount of seven hundred twenty-four thousand two oh seven. It does, it says, it's the section of the West Interceptor Sewer Main. And I would like to know what part of Perthamboy, where exactly is that located? What street is it located? Where is it crossed? How long is it? Like, how many lines does it, because that's a, a lot of money. All right, and the next question is regarding three thirty-nine, R three thirty-nine, eight twenty-five, Perthamboy Day, September thirteenth. Uh, where is the application to participate in that? And I just wanna be sure that there's not gonna be like restrictions as before because I know in the past, they would approve some people and not approve other people. Um, also, three fifty-six dash eight twenty-five regarding a non-certified purchase agent? Why do we need, why, why are we having a non-certified purchase agent? Like, what happened to the purchase? I mean, that's a big role. So, that's that question. And then lastly, regarding the towing, uh, every business, when you go into business, you take on your own risk, your own risk. And if you start going into public contracts, you know as a business that you are subject to what's considered good public policy. So, what would be normal in a private company doing their own business, they're assuming their own risk, they can conduct it however they want. Once you, you melt into federal contracts, government contracts, any types of public policymaking contracts, those contracts have to be conducive to the benefit of the people, not the company. If the company doesn't like it, they don't have to submit a bid for contract. They can go on their merry way, take on their own risk, ask whatever they want, the form of payment that they want. Because in the state of New Jersey, there's actual, actual, I, I think they made a mistake in this law where if you pay with a credit card, they recently changed it where you could charge service fees to the person as long as it's properly advertised. But this is what happens. How do we know a hundred percent that that company is charging a service fee but then is deducting it on their taxes? So, you know, all of this, I'm wanting to help the private companies, I understand it. But by the same token, it's a private company, you go into, you assume any and all risks. I don't believe in the government bailing out any type of private company. There is programs that the company can go into that perhaps is a little bit of a subsidy. But no person who is a government-paying individual paying their taxes should be subsidizing any company. They're making that choice. You make that choice. Not, they could withdraw at any point if they don't want to be subject to the public policy. Now, in terms of, of public policy, um, I have, I agree with you, President Miladi Tade, there have been people who have had items towed, like in the, um, Brook Avenue, in that area, Sub Summit, because they have a changing, they have to change their cars, and they'll pay them cash. And they don't have, they don't have a receipt. They'll like, they take the cash, and then they, they said, no, to get your car, you have to pay X amount of dollars, but I paid cash. Well, where's your receipt? So, there's stuff that is happening in the City of Perthamboy that whether people wanna admit it or not. But I stand firmly that it's up to the public policy to determine exactly for the safety of the residents how that public contract is going to be conducted with a private entity. If the private entity does not wanna venture into that space, they don't have to. It's not mandatory. It's by choice. Thank you.
Thank you. She has a few questions on the...
Sewer one, there's Patterson Street and Mead Street.
Patterson Street?
Patterson and Mead Street.
Mead?
Mead, yeah.
Oh, okay. And then the other one that she mentioned? Perthamboy Day? I mean, I, we don't know how they, they do the selection of vendors, I guess, who are going to be there. How do they select their vendors? The application process for that?
So, I'm not sure on that, but I'll get back to you. But I know the mayor's office is going to be putting some information out about that. But I'll get, I'll get back to you as to how that's going to work moving forward. So, if you are interested, we'll make sure you get the information.
Which one was the other one? I think, oh, about the appointing the non-certify.
We, um, so, in the, uh, we reached out to Division of Local Government Services, DCA, in regards to our options once, uh, we had a, a vacancy in our QPA. The young lady whose name, who you see on this going, that is, uh, being appointed as the, uh, the temporary purchasing agent, she's already taken all the courses, she's already taken a QPA exam. She should be getting her results within the next couple of weeks. Um, so, it's just really just a precaution so that we'll have somebody in place and we can keep the bid threshold at where it is, and not have to drop it to seventeen-five.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, uh, minutes, council meetings, minutes for June tenth and twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, July tenth, twenty twenty-four, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
This is a tricky one.
Okay.
Because I wasn't here on June tenth, twenty twenty-four, but I was at all the other meetings.
Okay, so...
Which, which day was it?
So, I would abstain on...
For June tenth?
And yes for the rest.
Six-ten abstain, okay.
I mean, that was my birthday.
Yes.
Okay. And Council President Tejada?
Yes, it's, okay. Bits, bits were received on August fifth, twenty twenty-five for the following. Twenty twenty-five Row Improvement Program Phase Four Barry Avenue, Clark Avenue, and Elm Street. And the bidders were Z Brothers Concrete Contracts Inc., Contractors Inc. The base bid is seven hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars with ten cents. The add alt A is thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty with seventy-nine cents. Add alternate B, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and five with forty cents. And the total is seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and twelve with twenty-nine cents. S Brother Inc., the base bid, seven hundred and thirty thousand sixty-nine dollars with nineteen cents. The add alt A is four, forty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars with seventy-one cents. Add alt B is forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars with seventy-two cents for a total of... for a total of eight hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five with sixty-two cents. Black Rack Enterprise LLC, base bid, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand three dollars and seventy-five cents. Add alt A is forty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars with forty cents. Add alt B is fifty-one thousand eight hundred and five with fifty cents for the total of nine hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars with sixty-five cents. DLS Contracting Inc., the base bid was eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Add alt A is thirty thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Add alt B, fifty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the total of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. C Coast Construction Inc., base bid is one million two hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars with ninety-four cents. Add alt A, one hundred and one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars with eighty-six cents. Add alt B, eighty-four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars with thirty-two cents for a total of one million four hundred and seven thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars with twelve cents. And the recommendation of bid awarded to Z Brothers Concrete Contractors Inc. Reports. Jill A. Goldie CFO of Controller submitted the following investment reports for the month of June twenty-two-five. B, revenue and appropriations status report as of June twenty-two-five. Current fund, water, wastewater utility, parking utility, harborside marina utility. C, check register report for the June twenty-two-five in the total amount of ten million eight hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with ninety-six cents. Number two, Fallon Barczeski Tax Collector submitted the report of collections for the month of June twenty-two-five. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons. Ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five and amendments adopted July two, second nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A, seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this is about deletions. I need a motion.
Second.
Call call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Ordinance number one twenty-one dash seventy-six, adopted December twelfth nineteen seventy-six as amended by ordinance number five thirty-seven dash ninety-one, adopted April sixteen nineteen ninety-one, also known as chapter three eighty-six, seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this is about sidewalk construction and repairs inspection fees. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Ordinance number one ninety-four dash seventy-eight as amended, adopted September nineteen nineteen seventy-eight, also known as chapter four fourteen, seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this is in reference to not turn on red on Smith and Goodwin intersection. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Number four, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Property Maintenance. Ordinance number six forty-six dash ninety-two as amended, adopted November sixteen nineteen ninety-two, also known as chapter three thirty-five, seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. And this, um, I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yeah.
Council President Tejada?
Yes, look over the...
Long list.
The long list of resolutions, if you want to pull anything.
I'm good.
Good as well.
You good?
Yes.
You good? Okay, the, I... The consent agenda is R three fourteen eight twenty-five through R three fifty-six eight twenty-five. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Maybe.
I don't think that's an option. Council President Tejada?
Yes. Okay, we have, we've had everything else. Public portion, five minutes per, maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against? Okay, it's open to the public.
Adel Toffick, three one, three forty-one Colfax Street. So now we have a different issue. So now we're talking about the bars, restaurants, liquor licenses in Perth Amboy. On the week of July fourteenth, the Perth Amboy Police Department decided they were going to do what you call undercover purchase operation, which I emailed to everyone that's here. And gratefully, Dr. Keel was the only one who responded, um, myself.
I'm not a doctor. I just want to make sure that, that's just the period. I'm not a doctor.
Sorry. I thought BA's were all doctors. So, um, the, the BA was the only one kind enough to have respond. So obviously, we all have concern. Each, each and every single person that you see here behind me is a bar or restaurant owner who holds a liquor license. So we have a little bit concerned how this was done. I know there's, there were summons that were issued and I know there's, obviously, you're not liable for the summons and it has to go through the court process. But there has to be a way of, this has to be discussed and has to be brought up because the way that was done, I feel it was wrong. So just to give you a quick synopsis of what took place, the police department sent a undercover, uh, police officer to see if he was going to be ID'd or not. Once that was done, the next day, uh, the police department led by someone from the ABC, an officer from the ABC unit in Perth Amboy, ended up mailing the bartender summons and also ended up mailing the owner summons. So in my perspective, I feel like, okay, he was a undercover police officer. He wasn't a consumer per se. Um, so I feel that was like an entrapment on behalf of the police department. Furthermore, he was, we were given a ticket to the bartender who served the person. So an absent owner who was not there was also given a summons. So I feel like Perth Amboy has to be a little bit more business friendly. The Sidewalk Cafe was already taken from all of us, which was as the governor had approved for it to be permanent issue. So that was taken away as per the city ordinance. And it kind of limited us to the spacing issues. Most of, we are here, we work hard to provide service for our customers. Our customers obviously come to our places because they like us too. And the Sidewalk Cafe was a huge hit for us because people like to sit outside, you know, have a drink in the fresh air, just like when COVID was going on. And the governor noticed that and he kept it open. He made it permanent. But Perth Amboy's city ordinance limited it, took that away. But my main focus goes back to the Perth Amboy Police Department. The way it was done, I feel it was wrong. It should not have been, uh, multiple summons that were issued, especially to the owner and to the bartender that was done. Um, and the way it was done was wrong. This was completely entrapp, entrapment. I'm not going to mention the, the officer or his name because that was falls on the Danube law, which I'm very familiar with. I mean, we could all put him, put him on blast, but it just didn't work out that way because that would have been illegal. So we come here seeking obviously kind of, uh, settlements. Like, we would like to meet with you guys and we would like to sit and discuss this. We go from one business to another back in the day when we used to have meetings with all the council meeting, with all the council people and the mayor every once a year. And I addressed this last council meeting when it came down to the towing. Now we're talking about the bars and restaurants. We also need, as bar restaurants owner, we need to sit down and have meetings with you guys to address our concerns also. And I, I, I believe I speak for everyone when I say that this is like very well needed. We have to discuss. Perth Amboy has to be more business friendly. They can't just attack us and just give us summons and just survive all of us. And we get it. We all pay taxes here. We're all business owners. We're all property owners. We pay taxes. But we also need cooperation from the governing body and from the, from the administration to help us establish more credible basis against what the police department is doing to us. We can't be a punching bag for the police department either because they need money so they come at us with fines. If it was a consumer or underage minor who happened to walk in and drink and the police catch him outside, then that's fine. By all means, we're guilty as found. But to send the undercover police officer, that's a hundred percent entrapment, a hundred percent. And I think it was wrong. And again, I don't think anybody even wants to speak. They might have welcomed, but that's how I feel. And these, like I said, everyone here is a business owner, everyone here is a bar owner, everyone here is a licensed owner. And we all need, we need to have these meetings back in place again. I can't say that enough. Because we can't wait till a problem to arise, come in, it's like, hey, listen, we need help with this. We, it could all could have been situated in a different manner. Thank you.
So your complaint is that they came in and they just...
So my complaint, two things. First, they, first complaint number one is the undercover police officer that went in, he's not a consumer. The ABC guidelines first are consumer. Laws are different when it comes down to police officers. My second one is that the police officer issued double the summons. One to the owner and one to the bartender.
Okay.
That's not fair for our business.
Okay. Your time is up. I just wanted to clarify the question, so...
I'm not, there's complaints, I'm not...
Okay.
So, Council President, so, uh, in my email to them, I made it clear to them that this is now a court matter.
Yeah, I saw the email.
We won't be discussing any or any meetings until they've rendered a decision.
Okay, all right.
Help us with Ijo sixty-four State Street. I'm just picking from what Adele just said. I know we only have five minutes and he didn't have enough time to say everything, but I do have another concern about that is the way everything was done. Um, it was illegal to me to come to a place, one of the establishment, take pictures of the person and don't give a report right at the minute. So what happened, they come to the place, take pictures, they leave, and then the next day, they come back and question the bartender, do you serve? Definitely, they're going to say yes. But the way they run this, the way they did it, it was like an, an illegal way to do it, law-wise. Because if you go to a place, you're supposed to give at least a case number. Didn't even do that. So I think they were setting up business owner. I think as a community, like what Adele said, we should be working together instead of tricking us or making things for us to fall under. They should come and say, okay, have meetings with us. Reinforce, don't forget, which we know we shouldn't be serving minors. Definitely, we should be asking for ID, which we do. Well, hey, we are human beings. We make mistakes. We do make mistakes. And that's one of the things that we do have in mind is to ask for ID. But there's going to be one day that you might forget. You might be busy. And jump into, okay, he looks twenty-five, I'm going to give you a beer. So the way they did it, it was wrong. Because this is a community and if we are a community, we should be working together. Because we pay taxes and we all benefit from it. Because our taxes help the community too. So that's my concern too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Now it's evening. Uh, Sharon Hubbard, Cornell Street, Perth Amboy. Okay, I know that you passed the ordinance to decrease the time from five minutes to three minutes. So let's go over that a little bit more. In your opinion, you feel that you're giving us the same amount of time. But let's break down the numbers. Initially, we used to meet four times a month. Each meeting, we'd have five minutes of public speaking at the caucus, five minutes pre on only agenda items only at the council, and then five minutes at the end of the council meeting for anything that you want to discuss. So for example, if what's being discussed is not on the agenda, you couldn't get an extra five minutes. You can only discuss on agenda items. So right there is fifteen minutes times four times a month. That's a total of sixty minutes that you're giving to the public on a monthly basis. Sixty. Fifteen minutes each meeting, four meetings a month. That's a total of sixty minutes where people who pay a lot of taxes at least get to come up here. And I'm not requesting a special meeting behind closed doors or anything because we pay taxes or anything. This is a public meeting where anyone from the public can come. So that's four meetings. Now it went down to two. Two meetings at fifteen minutes, you reduced it in half. So thirty minutes total is what the public have in a month to come and voice their concerns, of which part of that is only on agenda items in the count, during the council meeting. By reducing it now to three minutes, three minutes for the caucus, three minutes for the beginning, which is on agenda items only, and then three minutes for the public part at the end, that's only a total of nine minutes. Nine minutes per each meeting session times two, which is you meet twice a month. You reduced us from sixty minutes that we had with the public to now only eighteen minutes. That's it for a month for the public. I don't think that's enough time. And we pay a lot in taxes because recently, a lot of residents have received their tax bill. Most of them have gone over five percent increase in their twenty-two-five taxes. Some people, an extra three hundred, an extra six hundred, all around, over five percent. And you're going to tell me that us as taxpayers can only deserve or have eighteen minutes a month, of which some of those minutes are only on agenda items, which we cannot speak on. So technically, we have six minutes on what we can speak on regarding anything that we want in terms of any item. I mean, there are people who say, oh, we can meet with the mayor, we discuss this. And there's groups that want that advantage. But most people, they don't even receive that benefit. And you just changed that. So I hope the residents of Perth Amboy who want to come and express their problem that they now know they only have a total of eighteen minutes in the whole month to bring up the issue, of which three of those minutes are only on agenda item. And that is a trav, travesty. It really is. So however you want to rationalize it, you have back-to-back, you don't. Because when you broke it down for each me, meeting, we had more time to speak during those meetings. And now it's condensed, less time. I don't know. You pay a lot in taxes, over five percent increase in a year. Some people pay thirteen, twenty, eight, six, all ranging. And we're only now getting eighteen minutes for the month. That just doesn't seem right. So hopefully, down the road, something can be done about that. So be realistic. That's what you're giving us and that's what you decided on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There nothing changed about it. Only the minutes, the amount of minutes.
Yeah, that's it. We're still having the same amount of meetings.
Yeah, I, I did clarify that, that we have the same amount of meeting. And also, she also forgot the ordinance that are, a public hearing, it has a three minutes also on the ordinance. So, um, anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, council comments, uh, Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us and for voicing your concerns and suggestions. In regards to business meetings, I know that that recommendation was made at the last meeting and I'm agreements as well. I think, um, working together as much as possible is key and is crucial. Um, in regard, for my next point, in regards to the fire department, I'm super excited to see the next steps in regards to the second fire station on the east side of our town. I know it'll take a few years, but I am super excited. I know it'll take a few years, but I am super excited. I know this is, good things coming our way. And of course, as always, keeping the lookout of the city events that are coming up. I know the library has a lot of events, the summer concert series as well, Perth Amboy Day, as mentioned, more information to come. And lastly, I know that the festival was a success, the Dominican Festival, and in terms of that, we got to have the Miss Universe Latina winner representing from our town. So it was a beautiful thing to see. I hope that our young, our young folks from here and just everybody else is able to see somebody from Perth Amboy make it, speak so beautiful of the town, and best of luck to her, not her future. I know that Councilwoman Morales was able to go to the press release, so I know you're able to have a different perspective. But thank you all for joining and have a great evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morales?
Not much to say today, except for the fact, well, just want to say thank you, Chief, I have been seeing the quads out, so thank you for that. Just want to say also, congrats to the United Dominicans, you guys did a great job. Thank you to DPW, the police department, you guys pulled off a really good festival this past weekend, and I did have the opportunity to meet Yameleks Hernandez, who is on her way to compete the Miss Universe in November, and hopes, you know, hopefully she brings home the crown back here to Perth Amboy. Very proud of her and very proud that we do have good things coming out of Perth Amboy. And hearing about all the, the team, the teams that are going to the nationals, you know, this is great things that are, you know, our youth is being involved in, so it's always so good to hear about good things happening in Perth Amboy as well. And that's about it, just there are still some events coming, you know, going through in the city. We have the summer concerts, this weekend, there is a volleyball tournament going on at the waterfront, there are some other like health fairs, so take advantage, summer is almost over. But take advantage while the weather is still nice and summer is still here, so, and that's it. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio?
Well, I don't really have much to say, other than I think there should be a dialogue with the bar owners and restaurant owners and the police department where, you know, every so often, I don't know, quarterly or twice a year, they can meet with the people that enforce the laws and go over, you know, and have a give and take. I mean, you know, I know that in my time, when I did it for all those years, it was good to walk into the businesses and develop a rapport with the business owners, especially the bar owners. And I used to work five to three, and one of the things that I was tasked to do would be is to make checks at the bars. And you got to know the people that went there and also know the people that worked there and the people that owned it. So I think it's a two-way street. I think the police department should get to know the bar owners on a more cooperative part. Look, enforcement is part of the law, and that's just to protect the public, but I also think it also is important to meet and, and discuss. With that said, you know, I understand where you're coming from. Now, on a, on a separate subject, I had the opportunity for the first time in a long time to go to the Dominican Festival, and I was very impressed, not only impressed by the way it was being run, but also the work that the chief of police did coordinating with the Dominican Festival, that was outstanding. And, you know, so I think that cooperation, like with the Dominican Festival, we can transfer that over to the business owners.
Right.
And I don't think that would be a problem. I know that, that the chief would, you know.
Be open to that.
Be open to that, so. And also, I also got a tour the other day, besides checking out all the equipment and all the vehicles, I did finally get to see how the drones work and the intel center, and it's very impressive. I'm good.
Thank you. And I also agree on the communication between the police department and, and the business owner. That's not only with the bars, but with all kinds of business in town, I think we need that cooperation because working together and having the dialogue is going to make our town progress and do the right thing for our citizen, because it's only about protecting our city, and it comes from both sides. So on my, on behalf of the United Dominicans, and, and I know, talking about meetings, the United Dominicans usually have those meetings with the different departments that are involved in the Dominican Festival, to have the dialogue of what's going to happen during those three days. It's kind of scary, the amount of people that comes up, that comes to enjoy the festival, but I'm very glad that the police department, the, the United Dominicans group, committee, and all their volunteers, I want to thank them. I want to thank for the great job that DPW did, everybody, code enforcement, and everybody else who was involved. We saw our BA, I know that he couldn't stay the whole time, the music was a little too loud for him, but anyway, I'm glad that the community gets to enjoy something like that. I know a lot of, some people complain, but I think it's something that is nice for the community, just like the other festivals that we have, the Puerto Rican Festival and all the different festivals that goes in town. So thank you to the business owners that were here today, thank you for voicing your opinion, and we're listening. So thank you, Sharon Huberman, it has, it has been a while that you haven't been here, so it's nice to see you and your mom and everybody who came today and participated. Have a good night and thank you for staying. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.